Be too loud there. Good evening and welcome, everybody, for the City of Lake Forest Park City Council's special meeting for Thursday, November 7th, 2024. I've asked Councilmember Riddle to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Uh, do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Here none. It is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, council. With that, we can move on to public comments. And before we do that, I just, we've got a lot of folks here. Uh, make sure that you please silence your phones. It can be very distraction distracting. Say that to everybody on the dials. Matt as well. Thank you. Council will not be accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have purview or control over. However, the mayor of council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the mayor may request the speakers spend their comments. Council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute timeline. Chief before you, well, please bring it up. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your patience. Uh, just to let you know, there are multiple signup sheets in the back. So we have regular public comment. We have public comment for the various hearings that are throughout the meeting. Is if you have any questions about that, please feel free to get clarification. So you don't have to jump around. Okay, that's great. Thanks, everybody. Uh, with that, um, public comment, we're going to start with Andrew Thurman. Welcome, Andrew.
Good evening, uh, mayor and council members. Thank you for the time. My name is Andrew Thurman, and I'm a Lake Forest Park resident of 25 years. I'm also president of the Board of the Shoreline Historical Museum. Uh, other Lake Forest Park residents on the board are Barry Hanson and Armon Michalene is here as well. Uh, I think he's wearing two hats tonight, probably. Uh, our executive director Kenneth Dowd presented to you here in June. Uh, to briefly review, the Shrine Historical Museum started in 1975 as a bicentennial project uh, for the community. Uh, the museum is dedicated, dedicated to preserving, recording, and interpreting the heritage of historic shoreline, Lake Forest Park, and North Seattle. The region spans 85th to 205th from Bejut Sound to Lake Washington. We are funded by memberships, grants, and supports from the city of Shoreline. Uh, many Lake Forest Park residents have participated in the Milwaukee Forest, which has been a big community-wide event, and I know several of you have have been there as well. Um, we do have a one-year celebration coming up on December 8th as well at, uh, I think it's 3 o'clock or 3:30 uh, in the afternoon. And, uh, Lake Forest, Lake Forest Park's own Sarah Phillips and Sally Yamazaki have been leading that project for the, uh, community and the museum. Uh, the majority of the photos in our database are from Lake Forest Park at the museum. Uh, the museum has also participated in picnic in the park, library programs, walking tours, displays at Third Place Books and Commons, and has held its annual meeting the last couple of years at the Sheridan Market. Thanks to Paula for hosting us there. We have heard heartfelt concerns about the name of the museum, and, uh, we're in serious discussions to to change the name to something that covers the regions that we, um, represent. Um, and finally, we would respectfully ask the council to consider fully funding the requested amount for the two years. Um, I think that Kenneth had proposed to you. So thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate your comments. Andrew is the only one signed up for public comments during this part of the agenda. Anyone else in the council chambers? Would you like to speak at this time? Okay, we'll close public comment. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. And with that, we're moving on to proclamations recognizing November as the month of Movember. Please.
Yeah, I'm happy to, as I'm one of the council members that has a mustache, and also our family adopted a new dog over the weekend, so we're doing a lot more moving. Whereas the global charity Movember Foundation's vision is to have an everlasting impact on the face of men's health. And whereas the Movember community of over 5 million men and women have raised over $1.3 billion, funding over 1,320 programs in 20 countries. This work is saving and improving the lives of men affected by prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and mental health problems. And whereas men are dying on average four and a half years earlier than women and for largely preventable reasons. And whereas one in eight men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in his lifetime, and treatment options for prostate cancer vary depending on a man's age, stage and grade of cancer, as well as other existing medical conditions. And whereas testicular cancer is the most common cancer in males between the ages of 15 and 34. And whereas one in five adults in the U.S. will experience a mental health problem in any given year, and roughly 100 men in the U.S. die by suicide every day. And across the world, one man dies by suicide every minute of every day, with males accounting for 69% of suicides. And whereas moving can reduce your risk of heart disease, diabetes, and cancer by up to 50%, and lower your risk of early death by up to 30%. And whereas Lake Forest Park joins communities across our nation to challenge men to grow and women to support a mustache, or to make a commitment to get active and move, both of which spark conversations and raise vital funds and awareness for men's health. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Lake Forest Park do hereby, hereby proclaim November 2024 as the month of Movember, and urge all members of our community to join in recognizing this significant occasion and join the movement to change the face of men's health. Signed, this 7th day of November, 2024.
Thank you, Councilmember Goldman. Appreciate that. And with that, we have another proclamation recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native American Heritage Month is recognized annually to honor indigenous cultures, histories, traditions, art, and achievements. And whereas in the face of broken treaties, violent displacement, and genocide, Native Americans have persevered and continued with remarkable strength, resistance, resilience, and self-determination. And whereas Native Americans, including local Twamish, Snoqualmie, Snohomish, Sequamish, Tleilip, and many others, have been protectors and stewards for natural resources and environments since time immemorial, and whereas the city of Lake Forest Park values the many contributions made to society by native people in technology, science, philosophy, the arts, our local indigenous, excuse me, and especially our local indigenous volunteers and leaders. And whereas the city of Lake Forest Park recognizes that we must work to combat the impacts of discrimination and racist policies on native people, past and present, and eliminate inequities stemming from colonization. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city of Lake, city council of the city of Lake Forest Park do hereby proclaim November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month, and encourage all residents to learn more and support the work of native people and organizations. Organizations sign this 7th day of November, 2024. Okay, with that, we're moving on to item six, presentations. I believe Administrator Hill has, uh, Liz Loomis, Public Affairs. Liz, welcome.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
You bet.
I think Liz is over on the attendees list. Does she need to be moved over as a panelist? She has our presentation.
Let's check here. Hang on a second. Matt, do you see Liz over on the attendees side? There we go. Hi, Liz. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, thank you. How are you?
Good to see you.
Okay, so before we get into who we are and what we do, I would like to apologize for my hair. Um, so I have a goddaughter who's going through beauty school, and her assignment this week is to make people look like they were in Downton Abbey. Right?
Nice.
So at the point, I have a half a pound of, um, hairspray on my hair. I thought, no, I'm not taking it down. All right. So hello, how are you? All right, so I will share our presentation. Why can't I share? I'm, ah, beautiful. All right, great. Okay, so I'm sharing that. Great, and then I will go from beginning. There we go. All right. So at least, is this funny, right? At the point I look like I'm from the 1890s, maybe? No? All right. Very, very somber. All right. So, um, it's great to be here with you tonight. Um, so we have been talking with the city about sharing information about budget concerns. Um, and with the possible outcome of asking folks for a property tax increase. Okay? Um, so nothing is set in stone at this point. Uh, the city is doing a great community survey to figure out where folks are. And I think that's definitely the best way forward. Um, but the purpose tonight is to share who we are, um, at my company and what we do. So we have 50-plus years of experience working with local governments. I think the biggest takeaway here is, um, 93% of the ballot measures we take pass. Um, and that's because we interview you like you interview us, right? Um, so we do think Lake Forest Park has a great, uh, proposal moving forward. So another thing I think is critical for our clients is understanding PDC laws, state laws, right? To respect and commit to, uh, the integrity that we have with voters. Um, so that's something we also do really well at. Um, in 20-plus years of doing this work, I've had one complaint filed, and that was, um, with, uh, a union who was not happy about what I was doing, and it was summarily dismissed. Okay? Um, we also do general communications, uh, public relations, and crisis communications for our clients. Boom. So I'm Liz. Right? Uh, so I do all of the strategy key messages and communications planning for the project, and our contract is not to start until December 1. But we have had a very busy two months in October and November, helping the city, um, with, uh, supporting materials for its survey. Right? This is something that we have done independent of our contract, because I want to make sure the language that's in there is going to give me the content and data that I need to create, uh, the plan and strategy. All right, so Suzanne, I have blathered on. So you go ahead. Talk, talk about yourself. Talk about yourself. And Meredith.
Super comfortable talking about myself, but, um, it's good to see you all this evening. I'm Suzanne. I'm the Communications Director on Liz's team. I joined her company last year. She plucked me out of public education where I'd been for 20 years. I was leading, um, school districts through, um, crisis communications and, um, all manner of things that fall on the school district. So, um, my background is very different from Liz's in some ways, but our lenses complement each other's very well. So we have a great collaboration and, and so it's an excellent team to work on. Also on our team, but not on the call tonight, is Meredith Nettles. She's our Operations Manager. She comes to us from the ABC Bureau in DC where she spent about a decade, um, using a lot of the same skills that she uses on our team. So, um, she's oftentimes just kind of keeping, keeping the cogs turning, um, keeping deadlines in mind, reaching out to clients, communicating with mail houses, um, oftentimes with counties when we're getting close to election, things like that. So that's us.
Great. Thank you. And I think I hit the fast-forward page too quickly. Um, so, uh, who we are, right, and what we do, primarily ballot measures. So about 70% of our clients are on election ballots. But we do much more than that. So we do off-site general communication services, um, public relations. I hate that because people think that we're flax, right? We don't spin and we don't lie. So I think it's really important to put that out here, right? We believe that, um, voters are smart and they can make their own minds up. Um, so we don't spin things or misrepresent things or that kind of, you know, that kind of thing. And then we also do crisis communications. Um, so one thing I've learned in doing this for what, 25 years, at the point my phone rings after 9:00 PM at night, nothing good is at the end of the line. Does anyone disagree? Nope. I can't see your faces, so I'm going to take that as a yes. Um, but we do have experience working with cities, um, doing transportation benefit districts, public safety levies, bonds for police stations, levy increases, that kind of thing. So we are in a good position to help Lake Forest Park. Um, so how we do it, Suzanne?
All right, so typically, we like to have a runway of about 12 months, but obviously, we adjust as needed. Um, phase one, whenever we're working with a client, is we're talking about developing the project, and oftentimes that includes a lot of research, either, from us on our end in terms of your community. But sometimes it might come about, um, by way of a poll or a survey, where we're actually researching, um, the opinions in the community of the residents there. The next thing that we do when we are starting kicking off a project with a client is that we develop key messages. So this is typically four or five messages that really drive the scope of our entire communications plan. So these are the core pieces that will be repeated and repeated and repeated throughout the whole scope of our project by everyone on the team. Because we're all on the same page, and these are the things that we really want to drill into the minds of uh, the residents. And as Liz said, these are all factual things. Our job is to educate. So, um, and then finally, phase three is the implementation, and that takes the longest, and that's the bulk of the work, and that's where we're pushing out all the, the key messages, um, on various platforms and in different forms of media, which I'll address in a moment. Oh, I'll address it right now. So, um, when it comes to strategies and tactics, there's a lot on here, but, um, I'll boil it down to, um, a pretty simple, um, couple points. So, um, we look at the various pieces of media that you have already available to you, and then oftentimes we, um, support that or we supplement it. So, uh, one of those is paid communications. So anything that, um, you would pay extra money to push out, such as something that arrives in your residents' mailboxes, this is paid media, um, and we assist with that. When it comes to earned media, this is another, um, really big part of what we do, but your earned media is going to be anything that goes to the press or, um, you know, in forms of, in the form of news releases or letters to the editor. If you have relationships with editors, if you're doing editorial board visits, those types of things. When it comes to shared media, that includes your social media platforms, and it also includes any type of outreach that you do in the community. So if you have events in the community where you're answering questions or meeting voters and, um, for a Q and A session or for a coffee event, um, that's all part of shared media. Um, and owned media, finally, um, that fourth bullet point, these are, um, your assets that you already have. So that would include your website, um, any electronic signage that you have. If you have a, um, electronic newsletter list of recipients, that that counts as your own media. So we assist with providing content around those core messages for all of those different avenues.
All right, I'm hitting next. Ah. Great. Um, so how we get it done, right? So we have monthly calls with a specific communications group. Um, we also develop all content and make sure the city approves everything. And I think that based on our work on the survey, right? You have seen we never disseminate anything unless it's approved by the client. Right? And so that includes coordinating and producing all materials. Um, sometimes clients want to do that in-house, and that's fine, but if we can support them, we're happy to do that. Um, also 24-hour PR assistance. So a lot of times when we do projects, we find that there are issues that crop up that could impact us, um, at the ballot box. So we help our clients message through that, um, to, um, uh, provide a positive outcome. All right. Suzanne?
All right, so, um, we feels like we just, we just had this. But anyway, um, in another year, there'll be another general election, and just for your radar, uh, we're already looking ahead and putting things on our calendar. Um, so, um, August 5th is a date that stands out in our minds. That's the last day to file a resolution for the November 25 election. Um, and then, of course, we backward plan when it comes to, um, stacking up all the content with the core messages that we're pushing out. So we know that on approximately, um, October 17th are, is the day that the ballots will drop. Um, typically, um, Meredith is our person that's in in communication with counties and can get us, um, exact information when we get closer. And then, of course, November 4th of next year's election day.
So past projects, um, uh, we've worked with Airway Heights, Arlington, Briar Mill Creek, Mount Lake Terrace. We have a contract currently with the city of Edmonds, um, and also Blaine and Lake Stevens. Um, so if you have, uh, questions or thoughts, please reach out to managers and city council members about the work we do. Um, Airway Heights in particular, that's the largest tax increase that we've ever passed um, in August, a dollar per thousand. And no, I'm not recommending that for Lake Forest Park. All right, so questions, right? You have all of us here. If you have questions, I'll stop sharing, and I'd like to open it up. What are your thoughts?
Thank you, Liz and Suzanne. Colleagues, questions for either of them on topic? We do appreciate your patience about the previous, uh, council meeting. We're running a little late, shall we say. Vice Chair Ferratoni.
And, and thank you, Ms. Loomis, for your, uh, your comments and your, uh, introduction of your work. I'm just wondering, um, just this past Tuesday, Des Moines, uh, ballot measure went down that, which was a similar kind of, uh, public safety levy. Uh, can we take some lessons away from that?
Yes, yes, we can. Um, so, uh, I had no clients on the ballot in November uh, this year, right? Because it was, um, the presidential election that was very contentious and angry. Um, so all of our clients, frankly, were in February, April, and, uh, August in Washington, because we're in four states. So um, 50% of tax increases on the ballot in Washington lost. Right? And that was, um, definitely a result of the presidential election, right? And so that's not something I proposed for Lake Forest Park. I understand the county, um, or the county. I understand the city wants to look at November next year, and I'd be totally open to that. Right? But this year, no. Right? I mean, Des Moines, we could give you, um, a list of cities that failed. And it's all because they put those tax increases on a ballot when certain folks were really motivated to vote, and those folks who were motivated, um, traditionally would not support a tax increase. Does that make sense, council member?
It does. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Ferratoni. Colleagues, questions for Suzanne or Liz? That's really both.
Um, thank you for the presentation. So as you look at possible, um, dates, you've mentioned other dates other than, say, presidential elections. Um, if you think about what might be occurring after 2025, or what would be ranges of dates that you would suggest or not suggest?
Um, so my understanding is council was looking at the general in 2025, right? Um, so I, based on your budget concerns, I would not go later than that. Right? Um, I do think November is, um, a good time. You could do August, but I think November is the point to share the information with as many people as possible. Right? And those are the folks who are going to show up.
Thank you, council member. Deputy Mayor Bode.
Yes, hello, uh, Liz, and hello, Suzanne. Um, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I'm interested in, um, uh, making sure that we take the time to communicate the complexity of budget issues with the community, because uh, when we last tried to do this, that was, that was one of our shortcomings, to be honest, is, uh, budget issues are complicated, and it needs time for us to go through with the, with the community. Um, so I really appreciate your help on the survey. I think that's, the results are going to be very important for us as council members and to the city administration as well. Um, my question for you, though, is, um, from talking to other, uh, city council members and deputy mayors and mayors, it's my sense that a lot of cities are dealing with budget shortfalls as we are. Uh, and they are, uh, also dealing with pressures on public safety, policing, criminal justice, as those costs are skyrocketing, um, because of many external pressures that we have, you know, no control over. Um, so do you have any, um, uh, comments or insights on that? How pervasive this issue looks from your point of view? And, uh, uh, are, are other jurisdictions also looking at similar, um, uh, ballot measures?
Yes, and we have three of them. Right? Um, so there, um, is a way to present the need for additional revenue. And so that's something as we move forward, that we'll have that conversation with council. Um, so, for example, um, Airway Heights, we passed three tax increases for them in two years. Right? One was for, um, more firefighters. Another was a bond for a fire station. Uh, but they had to annex to a library district to free up money in their general fund. And the last one we did was a public safety levy for a dollar per thousand. Right? So there definitely, um, are ways to move forward to share concerns to share concerns about funding, right? So for example, you know, parks are, I love parks, right? I take a lunch by myself here where I live. And there are ducks and geese and wild egrets where I pack my lunch and go and eat. But parks aren't going to get us the money that we need, right? But at the point we get money, say, for police, right? That frees up money in the general fund to fund parks, right? So there are a bunch of ways to kind of skin this cat, mayor, deputy mayor. And that's the kind of conversation I hope we can have moving forward.
What about other jurisdictions that you know of that are looking at similar ways of raising revenue for policing, public safety, and criminal justice? Where we know costs are increased.
Look at Edmonds, look at Woodway, right? Just neighbors to you immediately. So it's nothing new, okay? So at the point we start seeing cities contact us for needing additional revenue, it then kind of permeates across the state, right? Spokane, right? Public safety levy, right? Edmonds, we're talking with them about potentially how to raise revenue for that city. Woodway, right, came out and said, hey, you know, we are going to fold. Briar, I love Briar, I love the city manager Paula. They came out, right, with us and said, hey, if we don't annex to this fire district and be able to retain the money for the general fund, we will go into default and the county will take us over, right? No police department anymore, right? No fire. So these are examples of successful efforts that we've done.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Deputy Bodie. Colleagues, any other questions for Liz or Suzanne? Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, thanks for your presentation. I do think it's very important to engage with the community to see what it is the community wants. And so my question, I just want to confirm that if, let's say, we get to spring or summer of next year and we're realizing there really isn't a whole lot of community appetite for this, that we would have the ability to amicably, you know, decide to not go forward with the levy and amicably part ways?
So every contract we do has a two-week out clause, all right? So I don't, I think Philip sent me something from your attorney that had tons and tons of words, which was great. So the way our company works is, you know, we hear things aren't moving forward, that kind of thing. We don't charge for work we don't do. And we are unusual in that regard, right? A lot of people, you sign a contract and you're on the hook with them, not with us. Two weeks, you say, hey, you know, we need more time to suss this out or something like that. And we say, great, two weeks is fine. You're not under any obligation. How's that?
Yep, thank you.
Novel, right? Novel?
Thank you, Liz. Colleagues, questions? One point. Okay. Well, thank you Suzanne and Liz. We appreciate your time. And once again, apologies for the late hour at the previous meeting. Appreciate your patience. We were here almost to midnight that night. So I'm glad you didn't stick with us the whole time.
No, Mr. Mayor, I binge watched Bowden, just so you know. While I was waiting to go on.
I'm sure there are a bunch of other folks on the dais that would have liked to have done that with you. Liz, thank you very much. All right, have a great evening. You too. Appreciate your time.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we're moving on to public hearing. This is a public hearing on ordinance 241302, interim development regulations as authorized by the Growth Management Act relating to indoor emergency shelters, housing, traditional housing, and permanent supportive housing. Attorney Pratt has the floor for this one. Thank you. Kim?
Good evening, council. Five of the seven of you have seen this before since 2021. It came to you from the state legislature where they wanted city codes. They mandated city codes allow certain emergency-type housing into their city code. So in September of 2021, this council adopted interim regulations to accommodate that new state statute. And it dealt with indoor emergency shelters and indoor house, indoor emergency housing, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. We have done it, we had done it in, under interim development regulations because you had not been provided all of the information you needed to adopt it as permanent regulations in your code. And we were waiting for information from Commerce. And that did come. It came in the form of a larger number of units needed that went to King County. And then that got worked with King County and the cities. So until those numbers were worked out, we thought the best course was to do this in interim development regulations instead. Those were adopted in ordinance, let's see, 1227. And what we're proposing tonight is to re-adopt those same interim regulations that were in 1227. They did expire in March. And we're asking that you, again, put those interim development regulations into place. And then basically, this would be folded into your housing development regulations that you are going to be adopting by the end of June under GMA, your middle housing. These go with those numbers and you can do it all at one time and do that thorough review. As you look at, since it's been a while since you looked at this, the first section of the interim development regulations deal with definitions. We're adding in some definitions into the code, just exactly as they are in the state statute. In section three, we did remove boutique hotel and temporary lodging from the town center because this statute said that in any zone where you allowed hotels, you had to allow this emergency-type housing. So that had been just recently adopted and council reconsidered and took the boutique hotel out. In section four of the interim development regulations, it became a permitted use in the corridor commercial emergency housing and emergency shelters. And then it placed certain conditions on those as they would be used in that zone. Those are in section 1838.25 of the interim regulations. We added conditions like onsite supervision if necessary, leaving 1,000 feet between different emergency housing units, providing exterior lighting that only shines down onto the facility site, having a maximum number of not more than 15. 15 was the number that former planning director Bennett came up with, with the help of Department of Commerce, sort of a population base. They were trying to help cities come up with numbers without giving city numbers. So that's what he came up with, the 15. That's why you see that there. Section five of the interim regulations basically adds as a permitted use every, in every residential zone, transitional housing and permanent supportive housing. And then you also have limitations or conditions placed on those that are somewhat similar to the other conditions. But it does add a little bit differently onsite service, such as laundry, hygiene, meals that are available to the residents and not available for drop-in use. Otherwise, they're pretty much like the others. So that is basically what is in those interim regulations. Because you are having this public hearing tonight, you would not be required to hold another public hearing in 60 days. If you hadn't adopted those permanent regulations by the time this expired, we will come to you again and ask for renewal. So I'm happy to answer any questions now or after you hear public testimony.
Thank you, Attorney Pratt. Colleagues, do you have any questions for Ms. Pratt at this time? We'll have the public hearing in a few moments. There's not a chance to ask questions during the discussion phase. Thank you very much, Kim. Appreciate that. All right, with that, we're going to open the public hearing on ordinance 241302, interim development regulations as authorized by the Growth Management Act relating to indoor emergency shelters and housing, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Mr. Kiefer, welcome.
Good evening. Okay, here we go. City proposes renew ordinance 1227, adopted in September 9, 2021. For the fifth time, the fifth time. Remember the quote? Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. Review the legislative history. Suggests a lack of guidelines, a lack of clarity, and a lack of purpose. Ordinance 24301302 is just a boilerplate of the previous legislation. For example, whereas the city has not been provided with the data as described in section two of House Bill 1220 by the Washington State Department of Commerce to develop housing element. They don't know what they're doing. You need to know when to say no, when enough is enough. So if there's a problem, throw money at it and bureaucracy at it. The socialist commissars in the state house and senate believe the homeless crisis is a housing problem and in their wisdom concocted House Bill 1220. Sanctuary policies of the city of Seattle and King County have exacerbated the numbers of homeless and drug-addicted individuals in the state. Their solution is the unelected woke bureaucracy identified as the King County Regional Homeless Authority via an interlocal agreement they have committed to providing $73 and $55 million, respectively. Governor Inslee allocated $143 million to a homeless program with fewer than 1,000 participating. Not mentioned in the ordinance is the city's $16,344 yearly obligation. Nobody likes to talk about money around here. Just authorize it. While some of the homeless are the result of socialist government policy, spending excesses and taxes, for most, I submit the problem is not one of housing but drugs and the invasion at the southern border. American security and culture are under attack from evil forces, traitors within, criminals, and millions, millions of invaders from foreign nations. As a result, many thousands of Americans are being poisoned and murdered while no one in authority lifts a finger to stop it. I have never witnessed my country in such extreme distress. It is time to wipe away your liberal tears, stop the invasion, and remove illegals.
Mr. Kiefer, I'm going to interrupt you. You're off topic and your time is up.
I'm on topic. Stop placating sanctuaries. Stop pandering to the homeless industrial complex and put an end to this immoral and destructive decline. And I was on subject.
Well, with that, does anyone else want to speak at the public hearing on topic? Thank you, everybody. With that, we'll close the public hearing on ordinance 241302. Thank you, Matt. Staff may address any questions that have been presented. Colleagues, any questions for staff on this topic?
This is the fifth time, if we're counting, yes. Not sure there were any questions.
All right. Thank you, Kim. You may be back up here in just a second. We'll see. We're moving on to item B, discussion, consideration, and/or possible action on ordinance 241302, adopting interim development regulations relating to indoor emergency shelters and housing, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. Colleagues, what's your pleasure? Is there a discussion on, I would actually entertain a motion for adoption of an ordinance 241302 versus a discussion?
I move ordinance 241302, adopting the interim development regulations relating to indoor emergency shelters and housing, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing.
Second. Hey, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, colleagues? And I want to make sure I check with our friends online. Deputy Mayor Bodie? Anyone online want to?
Yes, I would just say, this is not a matter that we have discretion over. This is something where we're operating under a state mandate. And I know we had a lot of discussion when we adopted the very first version of this interim ordinance. And this is just a renewal of it. And, you know, not that I am proud of the fact that we have to do five. This is the fifth time for doing the interim ordinance. I feel like it's, this is a situation where it's not discretionary to move ahead with this and it makes sense to do an additional interim renewal.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie. Councilmember Riddle.
I appreciate the staff's sort of interest in wrapping this into our housing look next year and not trying to do these two things separately and then have to somehow marry them together. So I think doing this interim so that we can get to the right point where we have a holistic look at our housing next year and have this be part of that makes a lot of sense. So I'm okay with this interim regulation being renewed, knowing that we're going to be addressing this soon.
Any further discussion, colleagues? Okay, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance 241302, interim development regulations as authorized by the Growth Management Act relating to indoor emergency shelters and housing, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any ayes? The ayes have it passes unanimously. Thank you. It does weave very well, as Councilmember Riddle said, and Deputy Mayor Bodie, into our discussion of housing in the coming year. With that, we're moving on to item C, public hearing on ordinance 241303, amending chapter 1626 of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code in accordance with amendments to state law adopted in Senate Bill 595290. I dyslexically play into that. Director Hoffman, you have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the record, Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director for the city. This draft ordinance is for introduction tonight and public hearing. You are no doubt aware of the high-level policy mandates that we're currently in the middle of efforts on, periodic update through December, middle housing development regulations through June, climate element through the end of 2025. All high-level policy documents and a lot of time to address the housing need in the state. There are other bits of legislation in the last session that affect the city and our development code. And unfortunately, we don't have the time to put them off. This is one. It deals with permit timeline, the feedback from developers, contractors, homeowners, buyers, everybody was that if something can be done to improve permitting, that would be helpful to the overall issue. if something can be done to improve permitting, um that would be helpful to the overall issue. Uh, there uh the legislation is uh specific is Senator Mullet's uh bill in the last session. Uh, and it has a variety of aspects that don't really affect us or that we've already addressed. Three primary ways it affects the city is changing the permit timeline dates, bringing them down. Uh, and a prospective penalty refund of a portion of the fees. Uh, and then some uh uh reporting, annual reporting requirements. We've gone through the legislation, the the uh mandate goes into effect January first. We have a proposal to meet it. The good news is that in regard to return of fees, we already have provisions in our code and and procedures in place. So the uh without getting too in depth, um the permit timelines change. When a permit comes in and it's counter complete, we have twenty eight days to find it complete procedurally complete. We do that now. The provisions in the Senate bill requiring it to be procedurally complete, we we already do. If it's incomplete, um the the timeline tolls or stops. When that information is then submitted, we have fourteen days to review it and either find it um remaining incomplete or move forward. That's the point. Once it's complete, that's the point that these permit timeline dates start to have an effect. They're shorter. Right now, the existing code more or less across the board is a hundred and twenty days for review. Unless written findings um from staff can explain why longer is needed. They are not presumed approved at a hundred and twenty days. Um, but the the emphasis behind it is that they're not strung out uh forever. So the the primary change is the one twenty becomes three different dates for the different categories. For the simple ones, think uh minor uh critical area permit, tree permit, no public notices required. We'll have sixty five days. And now that we're staffed in that category, we have no issue meeting that. Um, and they're they're fairly ministerial. Um, the second category requires a public notice. That timeline would go to one hundred days instead of one twenty. Uh, and by notice, I mean notice of application, possible seep and notice and a notice of determination. That has to all take effect except for the notice of determination. Once a decision's made, that hundred day stops. If there's an appeal period and so forth, that's not part of the the hundred days. So um a critical a major critical area permit would be an example of that. Requires public notice, notice of decision, appeal period, pretty straightforward, but it brings it down closer to a hundred days. The third category is requires public notice and a public hearing. In this city, yes, the the hearing examiner. Examples are conditional use permit variance, reasonable use exception. Um, very tight and often because of the character of the community, extensive environmental review. Uh, and so that would be the the one seventy as proposed in the ordinance. And it's reflective of what those take in this community. So with those changes in this ordinance by January first, the hammer more or less in the mandate is that if you don't meet those dates, you have to return a portion of the fees. Uh, ten or twenty percent. An example of that would be if the application is required to be done in a hundred days. Um, and you and you exceed that by nineteen. The legislation says you return ten percent. If it took you twenty one days, then you return twenty percent. Um, we have four measures already in in our code codified um out of ten in the bill that um do do not subject us to those fee returns. So our intent is to meet the the lower dates. We're not in danger of fee return. The ordinance reflects that. The third part, tonight's introduction and public hearing, the third part is annual reporting. Um, uh commerce is uh continually giving clarification. One of the clarifications that we we really have to nail down and make sure is for cities less than twenty thousand population, the annual reporting is not required. It's burdensome. Um, but it's goes to the intent of the legislation. How do you know that a jurisdiction's meeting those timelines and the intent without that reporting? So our intent is to do it. The draft ordinance right now captures that reporting requirement. Even though the the bill as clarified says that a city of this size population isn't is not required to do so. So that that's the background, the detail, the effect, the uh information is in the agenda bill and the draft ordinance and we're available for any questions you might have.
Colleagues, questions for Director Hoffman? Councilor Relivo.
Thank you for the presentation. So is it reasonable to say that the the Senate bill is sort of a a large sort of capture everything and that because of our city size that we're really just trying to focus on a portion of it as opposed to just saying adopt what the state had already passed?
Um, we're adopting the portion of mandates that apply to a city of our size and 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 character. Yes, that's correct.
And then on the reporting, um is the intent that we would actually report to the state or that we would have like a dashboard on our website that would report what we're doing because there's a difference in how much effort you have to put into reporting.
Um, ideally it would be both. Um, but there, you know, we've been understaffed for a significant amount of time. So there's a a time burden. To the extent that we have the information, it can be shared on on the website.
So is the intent that we would in it in this particular ordinance, I apologize for not reading the detail of it. Uh, in this regard, as you spoke about it, is that uh we would report to the state or that we would just report externally on our website?
Well, I I think we're I think the answer is that we're not required to report. We're we're too small in population. But the obligation to some extent is still there because these measures need to be put in place with this periodic update, the timing. And then the performance needs to to be there. There will be more sessions in Olympia. There's likely to be more changes to this and it will evolve. So I don't imagine that the exemption for reporting is going to stay in place for everyone. So it's important to collect that data.
If I just may, one of the challenges that we have is the city when we look at our finances are unfunded mandates. And so um I'm concerned that if we're reporting when we're not required to report and there's a burdensome to it that it does affect us financially.
And it may be anecdotal. I I don't see in the first year that we're going to have charts and spend lengthy amount of time reporting on all the types of applications, how long they took in determining what date they were complete, what date the determination what it was and charting it out and forwarding that to commerce. But some sort of anecdotal information is key. With the reduced timelines, there there will be an increased burden to achieve that. And we have very, um, we don't have broad resources.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Libo. Colleagues, uh Deputy Mayor Boddy, thank you, Vice President Furtone.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Um, I have a number of comments. First of all, um I I think that we should be doing the absolute minimum required by the state statute because it is going to be burdensome on us. We're already faster on permitting the most jurisdictions much faster. And so I am concerned with our small staff, limited resources, possible staff turnover that this is going to uh uh be a problem for us. So I I would like to make sure that the provisions of this um uh proposal are are the minimum required by the state law for a city of our size. So on the reporting, I think we could make it something that we will look at doing. Um, and we will collect the data. I I do think you're correct that we should collect the data uh but not at that granular level of exact timelines for every project. Um, and but I I don't think we should lock ourselves into reporting to the Department of Commerce if we don't have to. So I I think that it could be something that is um discretionary. Um, and that that would be an important change from my point of view. Um, last but not least, I have a fundamental question. Do these deadlines apply if suppose we have a two hundred fifty unit multi uh unit complex uh that comes to us for permitting? Do these uh short deadlines apply to a project of that magnitude, say at Town Center or in Southern Gateway?
They they do, but that's where the the gray areas come in. They're told for a variety of reasons. Once they're complete, it doesn't preclude the city from asking for more information. Technical review often produces a memo that requires lengthy periods of time for their geotech or their representatives to respond. The those time periods are not part of these days. And this is different than wireless and the shot clock. With a monopole or an eligible facility, they're presumed approved at the end of the deadline. This legislation does not change that for for planning permitting.
Yes, I I can also see other issues. Suppose with the new middle housing zoning, we have multiple units on a property but insufficient infrastructure for water, sewer, uh electric metering, et cetera. Uh, you know, so the the uh what I hear you saying is for a complex project, it's likely that we would toll these deadlines and take the time we need to to ma- to make sure we have complete information. But the way I heard it, you were saying once we say we have complete information, we have fourteen days, uh which seems, you know, crazy.
Well, and and that's not the determination or action. We have fourteen days to publish a notice of application.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay.
The due process.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was a decision.
The review continues until there are no more issues.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you very much. But I encourage us to uh make the reporting uh discretionary uh or something that we're looking at rather than something we're committing to do.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Council, we're good.
I know that we've talked about going to an electronic permitting process. Would that help with this? Reporting?
It it would, but there's a variety of hurdles to get there. Part of this Senate bill includes grant opportunities to do exactly that. The carrot with that is then you have to um commit to and show consistency to even quicker review. So there may be more opportunities for grants in the future. And it's that financial aspect that prevents us from going from what we have to an opportunity to have electronic. Once it's electronic, the reporting and the documentation is the easy part.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, any questions for Director Hoffman? And just for clarification, Mr. Hoffman, uh, this this needs to be adopted prior to January first. Is that correct?
That that's correct.
And so, Council, what's your what's your pleasure moving forward? If you have additional questions, we can bring you back to uh subsequent. We have, I believe, two additional regular-ish council meetings available.
And it's section four of um the ordinance body that pertains to the re- reporting.
Colleagues, what's your pleasure? Bring it back for review again. Okay.
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, we have to do the pub hearing first then. Yeah, thank you. Uh, okay. Well, with that, thank you, Director Hoffman. Sorry, too many public hearings tonight, folks. Uh, yeah, with that, we'll open the public hearing on or we public hearing on ordinance twenty four thirteen oh three amending chapter sixteen twenty six of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code in accordance with amendments to state law adopted in Senate Bill fifty fifty two ninety. Uh, at this time, we have no one signed up for making public comment on uh ordinance twenty four thirteen oh three. There'll be other opportunities, uh as it appears the Council would like to bring this back for further discussion. Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing on this ordinance. Thank you, everyone. All right, um. Let's see, uh, we will skip over staff questions and Director Vaughn, you're way ahead of us here. We're moving on to item E, public hearing on budget amendment for twenty twenty three twenty four preliminary twenty four twenty five, twenty, excuse me, twenty five twenty six biennial budget. Twenty 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 five property tax levy, twenty twenty five user fees, twenty twenty five service water utility rate, twenty twenty five sewer utility twenty six sewer utility rates, proposed solid waste utility tax and proposed sewer stormwater and surface water service tax. With that, we have Director Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, so at this time, we are going to go over. Thank you so much, Matt. We're going to go over uh the budget public hearing. And first, we're just going to just a quick overview. This has been done now three times this evening. Um, there's going to be a presentation, questions, comments, and then it's open for uh citizen and resident comments. So then walking into the property, the twenty twenty five property tax, the city does adopt the property tax on an annual basis, even though the budget is adopted on a biennial basis. So um this table uh breaks down the twenty twenty four regular property tax levy and then adds what we define as the one percent, which is the limit factor of one percent, which as you can see is um thirty four thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars. Then the city is allowed to, there's um ele- some different elements to property tax as far as the new construction, re-leving for the prior year refunds. Um, and then we do adopt this on a very preliminary basis. So there has to be, um, we do have to estimate high in order to make sure that the city is capturing what they are able to within that property tax. So then going into uh how it's calculated, uh screenshot from the previous screen, you have the twenty twenty four regular with the the one percent. And then in order to calculate this, the current levy rate for twenty twenty four is point eight zero four two nine. And then the um proposed levy rate for twenty twenty five is point seven one six one one. The um median assessed value for properties in the city of Lake Forest Park is seven hundred ninety thousand. So then you just apply the math as is presented. And then, as always, every single year, we provide the calculation at the bottom of this slide providing any assessed value and how we go there um divided by a thousand times the the levy rate. So then on my next slide, this is a very simplified. Uh, Washington State's property tax is extremely complex. So this is a very simplified version of breaking it down. But the city of Lake Forest Park um only receives about eight percent of the property tax that is paid on on your um on that invoice. Um, most of it goes to the schools, King County, uh the fire district and the library district. So then walking in, um this is showing up a little bit smaller than I would have liked, but that's okay. So walking through the general fund or actually just expenditures overall, mostly general fund, but some others. So um as discussed before, healthcare benefits increasing over eight percent. And the value of that from twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, that's increasing um and that's not including police's uh healthcare benefits. And that amount alone is about forty three thousand dollars. Again, that doesn't a hundred percent hit the general fund, but the bulk of it does. So then going down to municipal, oh, thank you. That's thank you for that assistance. So then walking down to the municipal court, uh Laserfish, which is a one-time purchase for some software and then an ongoing annual maintenance that is mainly for the municipal court system. Um, that being said, we have been told that it can be used to walk into more of a paperless system for the city in addition, not just um the court. So then on community partners, the Shoreline Lake Forest Park Senior Center has requested an additional uh ten thousand a year, adding to to twenty thousand, Shore Lake Arts for an additional nineteen, uh Third Place Commons for an additional thirteen. And then new community partners being the Shoreline um Historical Society and then Hope Stream, which note a a little note there is actually being um funded through very restricted opioid settlement funds that the city has received. And so those funds are highly restricted and can only be then spent on um items that qualify in order to um combat that uh those efforts. So then we talk about inflation costs being consultant supplies, materials. This affects not just the general fund, it affects the So then we talk about inflation costs being consultant supplies, materials. This affects not just the general fund, it affects the entire budget. But as we had a um a discussion at our last meeting, I decided to increase the transparency under these items being. The jail cost, so in twenty twenty-one, to give you exact numbers, the city spent a hundred and four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. On jail costs. Um, in twenty twenty-two, it increased to two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three. Interesting fun fact, I went back and looked at the actual bu- the original budget that was adopted for twenty-one and twenty-two. For jail costs, which is a judicial, which is outside of the city's control. I'm just gonna add that in there. And the original budget for those two years was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so we greatly exceeded that in twenty-one and twenty-two. Then going into twenty twenty-three, that full year was four hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. Um, the original budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for jail costs was four hundred and fifty thousand. Which has now been amended to being what you see in your ad- or your budget within the twenty-five, twenty-six. It has been amended up to nine hundred and five thousand. So just to give you a um a brief window into our jail costs um issue. And then going into dispatch costs, which uh we had a switch from, we had, we used to use uh Bothell Dispatch. Which they no longer were able to provide the service, so we had to go evaluate this, the city's evaluation and the council's evaluation. Was to move to Norcom in twenty twenty-three. So that increased um the city's annual amount that we were paying to the city of Bothell. For those dispatch services was a hundred and seventy-nine, three sixty. And then when we went to Norcom, that increased to four hundred and sixty-three, five sixty, so that's increasing. Our dispatch services, which we cannot go without, an additional two hundred and eighty-three, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the first full year. Our insurance, Washington City's Insurance Authority, that increased over forty percent. Um, previously and continues to go up, not at that high of an increase. But that invoice that does affect the general fund and other funds for the city has increased significantly. And continues to increase, and that's about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar invoice that the city pays on an annual basis. So then going into um a slide that was added from um is the traffic safety fund, the school walk zone cameras. Again, this is a directly from uh page fourteen in the budget. Are one of my favorite charts in that budget. I highly recommend um to go back and look at it is on page fourteen, the financial organization chart. Or the fund structure that the city is required to follow. And so within the general fund, um, we've created the or we're requesting on this agenda, actually, to create the traffic safety fund, oh oh two. Um, it is a sub-fund of the general fund, and so, as you can see, the square creates a major fund and the circles. Are what we define as sub-funds or non-major funds that then roll into the general fund. And then going into the budgeted positions, currently, we have the Guild Union, um, which is the police union. Um, the Teamsters Union, both of those for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, they are a currently in negotiations. And the non-represented employees, uh, per position have been evaluated on an individual basis. And market adjustments have been made in order to comply with what is moving for that exact position and title. Um, the general cost of living adjustment for um. For twenty twenty-five and six, uh, has been entered in at three percent. For the non-represented employees. So updated titles, I kind of went over this in more detail on my previous presentation. Basically, what this is asking is this is uh an HR function. A- and it's basically just truing up to uh have titles match more appropriately with the actual job descriptions. That uh that position is performing within the city, so it's just more of a true up. And then the one thing I will highlight is adding the associate planner within the planning. I'm sorry, the Community Development Department, technically under the Planning Department, um. That we are adding a an associate planner to have levels within that department. Um, in order without adding an additional FTE increase. And then going into the proposed sewer rates. So on this slide, this shows you just individually what the city has been asking to do and what the county has been asking to do. And why it's important to know what King County is asking to do is because that is a direct hundred percent pass-through. Um, we send all of our waste treatment to King County, they treat it for us, so it's just a hundred percent of a pass-through. And then the city's portion, which is the smaller portion of the rate, that is in order to do our operations internally. To maintain our staff and and operations of our own system. And so as you can see, uh, that are for twenty twenty-five, the proposal is uh King County is increasing the rate at five point seven five. Percent and the city is proposing to increase it at five percent. In twenty twenty-six, it increases seven percent from King County, and the city is again proposing uh to increase it at five. And then, so that proposed increase is a dollar amount of four dollars and twenty-four cents on a monthly in twenty-five, five twenty. Um, in twenty twenty-six, residents are billed on a bimonthly basis, so that is a hundred and sixty-one, forty-eight. And then in twenty twenty-six, it'll be one seventy-one, eighty-eight. So then. Going to the additional proposed revenue enhancement. Um, we are proposing an increase from the sewer utility tax, which is on that, um, the the actual monthly bill. From six percent to ten percent, um, and that does become a general uh fund. It to assist with the general fund deficit. And the monthly increase per household uh is about three dollars and twenty-three cents. And you can see that's an increase of moving from the six percent to the ten percent. And then you can see on the right, I in two different highlighted, um, you can see the difference of the, what, the six percent? And then the ten percent, and then I've added it into the full in uh monthly cost, so that in twenty twenty-five. Um, if the city did elect to propose and adopt this revenue enhancement of uh ten percent on a utility tax, it would be a monthly um in. Uh, a monthly invoice of eighty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents, and then right next to it in twenty twenty-six would be ninety-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Then walking down to the table at the bottom, that in totality of the revenue for twenty-five and twenty-six. If the city did move from an uh a six percent to a ten percent, that generates an additional three hundred, about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That goes directly into the general. You will see uh another very similar example here moving forward in the surface water. So in the proposed surface water rates, the annual increase in order to increase uh fifteen percent is. For a single-family um residential is forty dollars and sixty-three cents. The city is requesting to increase at um fifteen percent, ten percent in order to support. Ongoing operations that simply have uh inflation and re- permit requirements. Your previous um senior project manager was before you for a couple of years. Stating that the the cost of permitting, um. Um, and all of the the increases associated with surface water were coming, and uh they're here. And we're seeing those costs at a very high dollar amount, and so the city is proposing requesting um. An an increase of ten percent, and then because of all of the NPDES, which stands for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems. Requirements that that additional five percent, um, in the original preliminary budget, we thought that it had to be at a senior. Project manager level, so we were proposing an additional ten percent. Um, with more information, we have found that that is not maybe the match, the best match and requirement. And so we think that it will be more, uh, it'll be more of a fit at a project manager, which then has reduced the ask to uh five percent. So not an additional, not at twenty percent, but only at fifteen. And again, the surface water rates follow on your property taxes, and so they're paid and received by the city in that same manner. Which then again, even though the city adopts a biennial budget with this intent in it. Um, they, we will adopt on an annual basis. So then going into um the same conversation we were just having in the sewer utility, this surface water, um. The city is also proposing to increase the utility tax from six percent to ten percent, which um. On this, uh, in in order to offset the current general fund deficit, um, on per household. It is an increase of a dollar four per month. And an annual increase of twelve dollars and forty-six cents. And so again, um, the table at the bottom, in totality, what that does for the city to to walk through. Is if the city did move from a six percent utility tax to a ten percent utility tax. Then um the city is estimating to receive into the general fund over a little over a hundred and thirty-six thousand. So then um walking into an additional proposed revenue enhancement, the city currently does not have a solid waste utility tax. And um the proposal is to uh adopt one. Um, and that's part of this public hearing, so it would offset the current general fund deficit. If um there's been a lot of conversation around if. These, this revenue enhancement is adopted, that would part part of those funds. Um, assist in funding a project, uh, a climate project coordinator um position. Or what that might look like, um, the monthly increase per household would be on on average, seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Again, just taking one snapshot in order to try to give that that um estimate at a ninety to a ninety-six gallon garbage can. Um, and again, this is, there's an annual CPI um with our contract, uh, per our contract with Republic. That allows them to be able to increase on at uh three point five percent on an annual basis. And so uh the the little snippet below was provided by. Um, Republic, they provided us, um, giving us that if we did, if the city does elect to increase and adopt. A solid waste utility tax that at ten percent, as you can see the scale there, um, it would bring in uh two hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred.
Miss Vaughn, that's per year, not for the biennium on that one, correct? That's I think it's the only per year we have.
That is correct, sorry, and actually, I thank you for slowing me down because my notes below that I didn't include on the slide. So what that would mean on a biennial basis is that that would be around, um, if we did. Basically, for two years for that, if you use the three point five and then um. And brought that, uh, use that CPI adjustment, that would bring in um five hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. In full transparency. Thank you for slowing me down because I had that note, I just didn't read it. And so uh walking into the proposed utility taxes, we always uh want to know what our neighbors are doing, and so the city. Of Lake Forest Park currently has a sewer and a surface water tax at six percent. And again, I I do apologize, this is a little bit probably more challenging to read from the audience, um. And so we're proposing to increase that tax an additional four percent to raise it to ten percent for sewer and surface water. And um in order to adopt a new solid waste utility tax. And then it just walks through what the city of Kirkland is doing, that they have a solid waste sewer. Um, tax at ten point five and a surface water tax at seven point five, a water tax. Water utility tax, excuse me, at eleven point five. Um, Woodenville. Uh, has a solid waste tax at four percent, and then flat fees, Duval's is all ten percent for sewer, surface water. Um. And sewer water and surface water all at ten percent. Um, Kenmore has a solid waste tax at ten percent, and then you can read down the list, uh, and definitely what I want to highlight is. In Eastern Washington, and I I brought this uh to the attention, is the utility taxes in Eastern Washington. Definitely tend to reflect something different than what tends to happen on this side of the cascades. And uh their sewer um utility tax is at actually at twenty percent, solid waste fifteen, surface water fifteen, and water twenty. Um, and so it it ranges um quite quite a big range. And so continuing forward, um, the proposed revenue enhancement, eh, again, there was discussions on Monday evening. Um, at a special meeting about looking at what it would look like in order to um bank a portion of the utility tax. And so this is kind of just what we've put together in order to show uh what that would look like. And then as we're walking forward, finally, the the final item is the proposed twenty twenty-five user fees, which these rates then end up. On our twenty twenty-five user fee schedule, in addition to being adopted through their separate ordinances and resolutions. On some of them, the sewer rate is a mixed rate, uh, at asking to increase it at uh merged five point five percent. King County again at five point seven five, which is the direct pass-through, and the city of Lake Forest Park at five percent. The surface water rate at fifteen percent, the building fees increasing one point eight percent, and this is just to follow a direct pass-through. Of what the International um Code Council is requesting to do. And then increase our notary fee service from ten dollars to fifteen dollars. And that actually concludes our, my public hearing, an overview of um. Of the budget public hearing covering quite a few topics, and are there any questions or do we wanna?
Colleagues, so I can set expectations here, one, discussions with council leadership and it uh the budget. Uh, consideration or adoption of the budget, it's not going to happen this evening unless something changes on your part. The other thing is I want to make sure that everyone has um an understanding that there will be plenty of time to come back to this again, uh, unless you choose otherwise, so. With that, questions for Director Vaughn, it's a lot to absorb. Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you, I have a few comments, so I'll see what will happen quickly. Um, can you briefly explain the use restrictions on that traffic fund zero zero two that is uh proposed to be created in our general fund?
Uh, yes, so, and actually, I might be leaning a little bit to our attorney on that one. Um, but, so, the traffic safety fund that was created by the the new traffic uh cameras, the school walk zones, the twenty-four hour school walk zones. That is being, we are generating, we are proposing actually on this agenda through a budget amendment and a creation of a separate fund. In order to keep everything completely separate, it is still a general, it is still a sub-fund of the general fund. But we, it, those funds are are restricted in their use and they need to be tracked separately. And therefore, we felt internally the best way to go about doing that was to create its own sub-fund. To keep the the cash balances and everything completely separate. And then which shows the revenue and the expenditures of the approved expenses. And I might have to lean, if you're looking to the approved.
Administrator Hill.
So the legislation that put these um cameras in place restricts any revenue that they generate to traffic safety. Um, this has a a fairly wide um definition, but um some examples in the city would be. The roundabout, the the traffic enhancements that we do, um, a police officer who is a traffic enforcement officer. And as well as the time it takes for the police department and the courts to administer these programs. As we presented to you in the last um, meeting, I think that was Monday, that um, the chief has calculated roughly ten percent of his sergeants and his patrol officers, ten percent of their time is, is for this. And so we would allocate ten percent of their salaries, um, plus a hundred percent of the salary of the traffic officer to this new fund. And that was just, it was about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that alleviates the general fund. And then roughly, um, did I say ten percent? I meant to say seven percent. Ten percent of the court's time um, for the same um, actions, which is roughly just under eighty three thousand dollars a year. So it's, it's very specific. The dollars cannot just flow into the general fund. It has to one hundred percent be related to traffic safety. That could be engineering studies in the future for additional public improvements for traffic safety. But those are the, the regulations that the state set.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then just to clarification, so the new position types we are creating aren't, they do not have new hires within. These are to give us the flexibility as we hire individuals that we can hire individuals at different levels. Is that correct?
So uh, let's see, let's.
At least not all of them.
Go back to that. So what's being currently proposed is the updated titles. Everything within the updated titles is just, it's, it's a position that already exists.
Okay.
And the title is being uh, updated to more appropriately match the actual duties being completed by the position. So that's uh, mainly in the sense of the associate planner, that one is being added and so that we have the levels appropriately to as an assistant planner, an associate planner, a senior planner. And so there's levels. So um, the city has capacity there. The city is not proposing in any way, shape or form in order to add an FTE. It's just asking to adopt on our salary schedule to have that ability to take a, an assistant um, planner and be able to move them up to an associate planner or higher in that range depending on what happens um, with movement of employees within that department. And the lieutenant, that one with the command, changing that to the name of the commander. That is, there's a couple reasons for that. But one of them is to more appropriately um, tie it is since we have switched our dispatch to NORCOM, um, part of it is to make sure that our lieutenants, um, when our chief is unavailable to make calls, that that position is given the second in line, same level of respect, that they are the, the next position in order in, within the police department to make that call. And um, I can't remember the other, there's another reason, but I cannot remember it at this time. Okay. Thank you.
But let's move.
Yep.
Move around here. Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, uh, thanks for the thorough presentation. Uh, let's ask question, just a bit more context because I heard some gasps uh, when you mentioned the increase in jail and dispatch costs. So the city previously used Bothell for police dispatch and Yakima for jail services. Both of those cities stopped offering those services, so that forced us to look for other options. And the options we chose were the cheapest of the available options, even though they were extreme increases over status quo. So it wasn't voluntary on our part.
I would say that's a fair assessment. Uh, colleagues, other questions? Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm, I'm trying to understand the cumulative effect of the increases and the tax increases. So if we go back to, for example, the proposed surface water rates, um, I don't see a number on the slide.
The proposed surface water rates?
Yeah.
Um, I think it was, yes, this one. So if I read uh, left to right, we're proposing in twenty twenty five to uh, raise it fifteen percent. And then another fifteen percent in twenty twenty six. So just uh, for a single family resident, the current rate is two seventy point eight, eight six. And then we're proposing that by the end of twenty twenty six, it would be three fifty eight, twenty one. So that would be an increase of roughly um, eighty eight dollars.
Correct.
That's correct.
I think you're, yeah. I was gonna say, I didn't bring my calculator to do the math with you on TV.
Okay.
But I'm tracking.
It's a fifteen on top of the fifteen.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And then if we go to the next slide. There is on top of the rate increase is what we call the utility tax. So we're, so two things are happening. One is we changed the base rate. And then the other is that we're proposing to change the tax rate.
That is correct.
So when we um, so when we look at. But the way it's calculated is um, you don't see the total impact over the two years. What is the total impact to the residents over two years if we do a fifteen percent rate increase for each of the years? Plus a four percent increase on the utility tax essentially each year, right?
Mm-hmm. I get what you're saying. I, I didn't calculate that.
Because the, the thing that, that they're always wondering about is how much more am I going to have to pay the city government to operate each year? Because right now I'm asking you to do math on TV when they're really just interested in what's the bottom number? Do I pay a hundred dollars more a year or do I pay another number per year? And right now in this presentation, I have to do math on TV in order to figure that out. So it would be helpful to have sort of what is the bottom number that we're going to increase for each year? Because it's, it's like on the surface water, it's fifteen percent on the rate increase per year plus the increase on the utility tax. And right now in this presentation, you have to do the math to figure out what is the bottom number.
We can, we can make adjustments and before it's adopted and basically give a household change of sewer, surface water, what it would look like. Is, is that what you're asking?
Yes. So that when you add it all up.
Yep.
We're asking the citizens to pay on an annual basis for twenty twenty five, this amount more. And then on twenty twenty six, this amount more. And so over two years, how much are they going to pay?
No problem. We definitely can create a slide uh, in, on the fourteenth. And we bring it back in order to walk through exactly what that would, what making the decisions would, would have, how it would affect financially in twenty twenty five and twenty six.
Okay. And that same, it also occurs in the same way on the um, sewer because there's.
I was gonna put it all together. So surf, I was gonna do a household of sewer, surface water. And if we elect to go with the solid waste.
Yes.
Is that where you're going?
Yes. Yes.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
Because one of the things that then they'll do the math is, well, how much of an increase? There's, there's the total dollars and then there's an increase. And so if you increase a dollar by thirty cents, well, that's a thirty percent. It's not exactly thirty. In, increase it by thirty three percent, thirty three cents. That's a thirty three percent increase. So sometimes the percentage can be large on small numbers to generate small amounts of money. Whereas a small increase on a large amount of money can generate a lot of increase. And so it's useful to look at it both in terms of absolute dollars as well as percentages. Because you can otherwise, if you have a large number and you put a small percentage on it, you get a large number. Whereas a large percent on a small number gives you a small number.
Deputy Mayor Bodie.
Thank you very much. Um, I have a couple of uh, points uh, kind of of that I've taken from the presentation that I wanted to draw out. First of all, I wanted to emphasize that the base rate increase for surface water utility tax is because we have increasing federal mandates and state mandates for surface water management with no money coming with them. And so basically those are operational where the utility tax increase is something that will go to help our general fund uh, deficit. So I just wanted to uh, emphasize a point that our finance director made. But uh, that I wanted to underscore a bit, which is these are Clean Water Act requirements, federal Clean Water Act requirements. And uh, we, we absolutely need to, we, we've been basically underfunding these activities and deadlines are coming up. So uh, it is, it's aggravating to have unfunded mandates, but that's what we have. It's kind of like the same as raising the dispatch costs or the, or the jail costs. These are costs that uh, that are being imposed on us to meet regulatory burden without um, any kind of funding source coming with it other than this opportunity. Um, the second thing I wanted to um, emphasize is that um, for all the utility rate increases, uh, there, there is um, a waiver provision for financial hardship. And our city, you know, continues to uh, take into account um, the needs of lower income or people in financial hardship in, in looking at uh, these taxes. Last but not least, I wanted to say the reason why we're looking at these is because as you can see, the only increase in property tax we get every year is thirty four thousand dollars. Because of this, because of the one percent cap. And the one percent cap is not on an individual house. It's on a citywide calculation. So as you could see, if you looked at the property tax um, slides, our levy rate has actually kept going down and down and down rather than say, staying stable because of the one percent, uh, because of the one percent cap. So uh, that, the one percent on our property taxes only raises thirty four thousand dollars for us. So we need to look to keep our city services functioning. We need to look for things like the utility tax rates. I would note also on the utility tax rates, one other point, which is those are twenty twenty four utility tax rates. And in my conversations with other uh, city officials, almost every uh, other city I've talked to is looking at raising those rates further because many cities in the Puget Sound area are facing um, deficits, budget deficits and uh, uh, proportionate um, concerns about revenues versus costs that we are just because costs are going up um, everywhere for every city. So I'll get off my soapbox, but there were a few points here I wanted to emphasize uh, that I think were important from, from this excellent presentation.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Vice Chair Fertani.
Yeah, and thank you, uh, Director Vaughn for the great presentation. And I want to emphasize a point that council members Lebo and Deputy Mayor Bodie made, which is there are waivers. And I was wondering, um, either you or uh, Administrator Hill, do you remember who the waivers are for? It's not just low income. There's also a senior one.
There's a, a senior low income um, discount available on our sewer.
And, and are there any other uh, groups that are um, can get the waiver?
Uh, that's the only one that we have in place at this time.
Colleagues, other questions for Director Vaughn? We, we'll move on to the public hearing on a huge number of topics. Okay. With that, thank you, Director Vaughn. Appreciate your excellent presentation. It's kind of startling actually to see the lowest levy rate in history for the city, actually. Okay, so let's see. Uh, this, well, let's start here. You're gonna open the uh, public hearing on the budget amendment for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty three, twenty four preliminary, twenty twenty five biennial budget, twenty twenty five property tax levy, twenty twenty five user fees, twenty twenty five surface water utility rate, twenty twenty five, twenty six utility rates, proposed solid waste utility tax, and proposed sewer, stormwater and surface water tax. And with that, uh, Mr. Kiefer, you have the mic, sir.
Thank you again. Okay, um, to the property taxpayers of Lake Forest Park, King County and the state of Washington. Does the Lake Forest Park Stewardship Foundation, Parks and Recreation Board, Planning Commission, the Climate Action Committee run City Hall? Reason I, I inquire is, is that the unelected, these unelected entities lobby the city, King County and the state of Washington for public tax dollars to purchase real estate for parks and special interest agendas while the city provides approving legislation. These transactions cost millions of tax dollars and are negotiated on the QT without public notice or public hearing. It appears that the mayor and council just love to spend other people's money, but want to keep it secret. Keep it, keep it down. This is a pattern practice over many years. Lately, they have exhibited a tendency to acquire park property without funding and a development plan. Relative the, relative to the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six budget, the finance director noted in the agenda cover sheet that the city is proposing to use three point one million dollars in unallocated fund balance in the general fund and forecast projections show future year expenditures drastically outpacing revenues as we have been discussing for over five years. So you've been discussing it for over five years. Good job. Simply put, the city normally has spent more than it has. Rather than cutting costs, they continue to spend. So the elephant in the, in the room tonight is what have you, what costs have you cut? I haven't heard one word on cost cutting. Oh, man. They continue to authorize professional service contracts like you're planning on doing, to lobby the state for tax dollars and to market a proposed property tax levy to the Lake Forest Park property taxpayers. And that's your resolutions twenty four nineteen seventy eight, twenty four nineteen seventy three. In addition, ordinance twenty four nine, uh, twelve ninety seven proposes to amend the budget to increase the indebtedness. It's, it's after the fact. And part of the added tax burden is from the Rose one point six million dollar property acquisition. Yes, that was without public notice and public hearing, totally without. In my opinion, the mayor and council have failed in their fiduciary duty. Amen.
Hey, moving on to Sarah Phillips. Welcome, Sarah.
Hello, my name is Sarah Phillips. I live in Lake Forest Park. I'm the chair of the uh, Climate Action Committee, and I wanted to say that I support the um, surface, uh, sewer uh, utility tax specifically for a climate action manager. I just want to remind you um, that I've said this before, but you know, this is, we're on, we're on trajectory to be the hottest um, year in recorded history. And that um, seventy six percent of the people in the state of Washington believe that climate is a, is a significant issue and needs to be addressed. And we see that same thing in our chart. You big, I didn't bring my chart in today with pins in it, but it represents what we do when we're out talking to the people in Lake Forest Park, that they also feel that climate is a significant issue. You know, it, I, and I, I don't have to say this to you because you know it, but if you postpone looking at the issues of climate, it's gonna be, uh, it doesn't make it go away. We still have all those issues. Um, and we really have to act locally. The city council does, at the city. all those issues. And we really have to act locally. The city council does, the city council needs to provide leadership on this issue. We can't, we can't really count on anybody else to do, to solve our emissions issues. We have to do it ourselves. And the way we do that is with a city, with a manager who's thinking about climate all the time on behalf of our citizens, and assisting them and us to make the transition to electricity, to build resiliency, and to figure out how to sustain our property, our forests and our resources. And I just want to remind you that you, as a council, have made a commitment to reduce emissions by 50% by 2050, 2050, by 2030. So again, I want to say that I support the solid waste franchise fee for the climate action manager. And I think it should be hired this year, and maybe, you know, you're not supposed to give up anything in advance, but maybe part-time this year, moving towards full-time, because it's not going to get cheaper next year. It's not going to be easier next year, and it's not going to be more effective next year. So I encourage you to take a look at those resources, because I think it's important to do that now. And I just want to say I thank you for the work that you're doing on the climate. I know this is, if this was easy, you would have done the easy thing. I know this is hard work, and I want to thank you for the work that you're doing on this, but I still want you to consider the climate manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Jack Tonkin, Jack, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first thank a few people for taking and making a great effort in the last week to take this $3,001,000 down to $880,000. And that's you, Mayor, and that's Phil, and that's Lindsay. And I think that was five years overdue, but not their fault. And you guys took it on, and you did a heck of a great job in bringing that down. So now we have something we can work with. So I wanted to make sure that I think the public is appreciative of that. I took a few hours of the afternoon to look at some low-hanging fruit. I'm not equipped with what's going on with the rest of your budgets that you're working with. They're too sophisticated for this guy. But I did look at the line items in the catalog in your budget. And I looked for discretionary expenses that could be softened, cut maybe a little bit, nothing harmful, but a little here and a little there. And stayed away from the salaries so nobody gets hurt, employees, so nobody loses their job, to see what I could do in just a couple hours of looking at what I think are candidates. And if you want to take a look at candidates, or what we've got here in this, in the discretionary areas, there's quite a bit of things you can do. And what I did, in the time that I worked on, I came up with $1,1290. And that would more than offset the 880, and you'd be in the, you'd be in the black. So I'm going to leave this with you, Tom, to look at. I'm returning it. You returned mine. I need this back, but I'm going to give you this because these are the cuts that I think can be done. I think also we have time to do some more. And you've got the momentum, you've got the interest, you've got the public behind it. So I would like to see more effort given to this, so you get a better budget defined. Once you do that, then I think you're really ready to talk about, do we need a levy lift or not? And if we do exactly what we're looking for, exactly how much we have to ask, and it's based on a lot more study, not just winging it. That would also suggest that you stop the consulting right now on the project and postpone it until you find out whether we even need it. And you can do that. The contract puts it out that way. You could cancel it. And my last, I don't have a last here, it looks like. So I'm going to have to say thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate your comments. Let's see, Alan Keast, welcome, Alan.
I commend the city officials and the staff for the work in recent weeks to make adjustments to the budget, to move it closer to being balanced to current revenues. I believe it is good policy to aggressively fund police positions with traffic infraction revenue. And I further suggest that the city explore utilizing traffic infraction revenue to support a position in the planning department to oversee the transpost study and related traffic safety issues. At last Monday's council meeting, Councilmember Lebo made comments on point when he cautioned against spending money the city does not have for discretionary community grants. The original budget proposal put the city on a slope that risks county intervention or receivership during the years 2027, 2028. It should be understood that if a receiver ever were necessary, all discretionary funds would be eliminated. The $95,000 expenditure for a communications consultant plus travel plus mailing costs falls into the category discretionary expenditures. Using scarce tax dollars to hire a company whose mission in their own words is, quote, "to drill into the mind of the residents," close quote, "a proposal that would lift tax levy constraints in state law is simply a frivolous use of our tax dollars." Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Let's see, making sure I'm, some people did not want to speak. Sherry Van. Welcome, Sherry.
Thank you. I'm going to talk tonight in support for Third Place Commons and the benefit it provides our community. Recently, a neighbor shared on social media that there is a, in her quote, "that there is a quiet calm of solidarity that is shared. Third Place Commons is a very safe place of courage and kindness that was more healing than I could imagine." That's her quote that she recently shared. And this statement is shared as she mourns the turn of events recently in our nation this past week. She found that she could go find solace and healing at our community center at Third Place Commons. It's in good times and bad. Third Place Commons is the lifeblood of our city. It's measured in the health and wellness of our citizens who get fresh vegetables from the Market Bucks program and the SNAP benefits from the farmer's market. This is not to mention the weekly gathering place of every dog of Lake Forest Park, including a beloved Bernese mountain dog named Penny. Do you want health, human health, and community well-being from our farmer's market? Support Third Place Commons. There is a measurable and positive impact of having a free, open, real space for real community, a place where children and teens gather, new and old neighbors connect, people campaign and encouraged to vote in nonpartisan grassroots elections, working to protect and expand voting rights, partnering with the League of Women Voters. Everyone is represented at Third Place Commons. I have seen many of you, as you were campaigning for city council, you shared your voice in support of Third Place Commons. Do you want sharing of nonpartisan voter information across all candidates? Support Third Place Commons. Boy Scouts win the Pinewood Derby, neighbors share in crafts and music, dancing, laughter, and languages. Multi-generation benefit all. Do you want a neighborhood gathering place where it is free to hang out? Support Third Place Commons. Thank you for your continued support of our very own Lake Forest Park Third Place Commons. It is literally the center of our vibrant city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Let's see, Celia Sodall. Welcome, Celia. I'm missing anybody here. There we go. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Celia Sodall. I'm a resident of Lake Forest Park and also Executive Director of Third Place Commons. I understand there are indeed significant concerns about the city budget and a sizable shortfall. This is truly a difficult challenge, and I appreciate all that you each do in your services, council members, to figure out solutions. But as you do this work, I ask that you consider this. It may be easy to think that the arts, humanities, human services, and places to gather and connect are extras, luxuries in a budget. But what they really are, are the things that actually make our communities healthier, stronger, more vibrant, resilient, and engaged. Investing in the people of a community is just as important as paying for sewer rates and insurance, and is comparatively cheaper because it is a smart investment in the longer-term health and well-being of a community. Please don't shortchange this community by removing your support for community partners. It may be a short-term win for your bottom line, but it will cause irreparable harm and drive people and organizations away from Lake Forest Park. Exploring ways to raise revenue in this community is necessary, and in my personal opinion, a levy lid lift is an obvious first step. But I implore you to not make drastic decisions that could very well drive our organization, as an example, significantly into the red. It is not a stretch to say that city funding is what keeps Third Place Commons alive. And as the default community center for Lake Forest Park, that also brings art, culture, civic education, and performances of all kinds to this region in a completely unique, public, and free way, along with offering a bustling farmer's market and connected nutrition assistance program for our vulnerable neighbors, eliminating or lessening funding would present a very bleak scenario for the commons and the programs we provide. Now, more than ever, I believe that we must commit to creating and supporting safe, inclusive, and welcoming spaces for community members to connect, create, craft, dream, learn, be inspired, and build together. That is the only way a community can truly thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Celia. Next, we have Cindy. I can't quite read this. McCrea? McCray, excuse me. Cindy McCray. Apologize, I
No, 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 no.
Make mistake on someone's name sometimes.
We've heard it all.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm the Shoreline Lake Forest Park Senior Activity Center Board Treasurer. And we understand that everybody has budget concerns. But on the behalf of the board and the senior center, I would really like to thank Lake Forest Park for their support. We offer many things to the seniors in our community, such as clubs and classes, and then serious ones for social advocacy, veterans' benefits, healthcare, and most important, encouraging social interactions that can easily be lost in an aging population. We are a hub for our community's 1,069 members. As of September 30, the center has interacted with 516 Lake Forest Park residents, and our goal for 2024 was 210. So we're on target to triple that number. The center has provided 5,340 health program hours for Lake Forest Park residents. The annual goal was 2,031. So it looks like we're going to triple that number as well. Older adults are supported to enable them to maintain the highest possible quality of life through our access to and referrals for a variety of services tailored to meet the needs and concerns of seniors in North King County. We have fitness and wellness classes, social and recreational activities. The attendance for these programs and classes range from 3,000 to 3,500 people per month. We offer 16-plus activities and programs every week, from yoga and rock and roll aerobics to driftwood carving and American Sign Language. We support people on their aging journey through community connections and accessible services. We have community dining available Monday through Friday with exceptions for holidays. This format allows and encourages social interaction, and we have approximately 150 people a week that come to us for lunch. Our board is active and has fundraising events throughout the year. Our two most popular are Rainbow Bingo and Trivia Night. I encourage you to join us for fun and entertainment. There's a lot more that I could say about the senior center, but please come by sometime during the day. 11 to about 2:30, 3 o'clock is very busy. We're very grateful for your support, and thank you so much for your assistance to help us maintain and grow for our impact on Lake Forest Park seniors. Thank you again.
Very much, Cindy. Appreciate it. We're going to be moving on to Laura James. Laura, welcome.
Good evening. I am Laura James, Executive Director of Shore Lake Arts. It feels like not very long ago, I was here presenting all that we have been able to do with the funding that you have provided for us over the years, and specifically 2024. That is such a gift for us. I want to remind everybody that we are the local arts agency for LFP. What that means is we have access to pathways of grants through the arts agencies that others do not. Those grants are restricted, so they do not cover things like our administrative costs or any of the intangible items that need to happen to throw these community events. Our organization was created because of the budget cuts that were happening in the school district. That is why we support both Shoreline and Lake Forest Park. With those cuts, we have never seen it come back up. So we are getting more and more creative on how we can find these funds. Why is it important? Arts, you just run along and play in arts, right? Art saves lives. Art is for the kids that do not think like other people. They don't know where they belong. You give them this creative outlet. It helps them thrive and understand who they are and become their whole self. It strengthens the community when these kids have a place to go and they do not feel othered. We have a core mission to not only support local arts, but build community through the arts, because we feel so passionate about what this does to heal a community, but also strengthen it. So you may have come to our concerts in the park during the summer. You may have gone to our Arts in the Park and saw Shakespeare, which is the first time that we've brought that to this community. In a very, very lean year, we have been able to bring in over 700 folks over these four or five events that we've been able to do within the city boundaries. We have plans in 2025 and beyond to do even more. This is a great reduction of what we've been able to do in the past. What that has done is that in turn has allowed us to hire over 20 vendors. We are hyper local, and we start with LFP artists and shoreline artists and then work out. We have currently created new programs. We are working with LFP partners. We are starting more programs with Third Place Commons. We have also started art classes at the senior center, and there will be even more. And we are partnering with actual artists that live within Lake Forest Park and small businesses to house our events. So in return of all you're doing for us, I want to be seen as somebody that is also equally giving back to Lake Forest Park and helping to strengthen the community and make it super cool. Thank you.
Very much, Laura. Thank you. Thank you. Very much, Laura. Thank you. Uh, David Farkas. Welcome, David.
I'm Dave Farkas. I've lived in Lake Forest Park for forty years. I'm a retiree. I'll be very brief. I strongly agree with the previous three speakers. We need to support the arts. We need to support the historical Shoreline Historical Society. We need to support Third Place Commons. We need to support social services, including social services for seniors. All this is part of having a desirable community and a caring community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Uh, I'm sure I'm not missing anyone here. Say, David. Armon Micheline. Welcome, Armon.
Good evening. My name is Armon Micheline. I have been a resident of Lake Forest Park for about forty-five years. Currently, I am the treasurer for the Shoreline Historical Museum. I'm also a board member of Shore Lake Arts. Clearly, this is a time of great financial concerns for our city. But even as I say that, I recognize that we have been here before. We have weathered shortfalls, and somehow we've come out on top. Historically, when there are shortfalls, the first programs that go are the arts and the humanities. Every time these programs are cut, we all feel the loss. We look for ways to make up the differences and frequently talk about the negative effects that these cuts to programs have on our overall emotional and overall well being. I'm here today to advocate for the funding for the Shoreline Historical Museum and Shore Lake Arts. Both offer our community substantive programs, educational, personal growth, resources for study, and development, as well as in-depth information for research. Both the Shoreline Historical Museum and Shore Lake Arts depend on the financial support of the cities where we represent in order to meet our goals and responsibilities. Both organizations have long-term plans that will enhance our presence in our surrounding communities and will bring new programs and opportunities to our citizens. I urge you not to cut the funding, but rather keep the proposed funding alive so we can continue to grow, support, and work with Lake Forest Park and the surrounding communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Armon. Appreciate that. Um, let's see, uh, Jim Liming. Welcome, Jim.
Hello, and thank you. Yes, I'm Jim Liming, and I've lived in Lake Forest Park since nineteen seventy-six, so that would be forty-eight years. Uh, I'm here to address, uh, I'm not here to ask for money. I'm here to address the budget and the the projection of revenue and expense. And I just hope that I'm not the only person in the room that sees it, thinks it's so ironic that the council is seeking to fill a three million dollar deficit in the general fund at the same time that we're projecting to collect eight million dollars in the traffic safety fund from the speed cameras. And actually, just like Councilman LeBeau said, you know, you had to do some of the math yourself. I I had to do some of the math myself in looking at the budget. I've in 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 the packet that I was looking at, it was page four hundred ninety-eight, and it was the itemization of uh, beginning cash balances and ending cash balances, not just in the general fund, but in all the funds. And over that two-year budgeting period, you're starting with cash of twenty-eight million two hundred eighty-one thousand, and you're ending two years later with twenty-seven million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand. It's only a difference of five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. It's not three million. And if you cut that into two years, it's two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars per year. It's a number that the council could deal with. And as this gentleman, Mr. Tonkin, suggested, I think there are some items in that list of line items that can be tweaked a bit. If 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 I'm a retired banker and I don't know how to prepare financial statements, but I know how to read them. And I uh, I always look for the big numbers first. One of the big numbers is, for example, is the vehicle equipment and vehicle and equipment replacement fund, which would end the two-year period almost a million dollars higher than it is today. So if you're looking to save two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in each year, you might look at that number. And I don't pretend to be an expert on the budget. I only read it for a few hours this afternoon. But uh, I think it's ironic that you're looking at eight million dollars in receipts from the speed cameras, and that's at the low end of the estimate from the um traffic study that was done that proposed these cameras. Um, I I think it assumes something like twenty-three hundred tickets per month, and that was at a hundred and forty-five dollars per ticket, or two hundred and ninety for a second offense, or two hundred and ninety dollars if you go ten miles an hour over the limit in a school zone. So I think I don't want to ramble, but I want to end with the word optics. I think it's bad optics to be proposing a tax increase when the public finds out that you expect to collect eight million dollars in speed cameras. And when the public finds out that you plan to perhaps hire a climate plan coordinator for a city, our little old Lake Forest Park. Um, if I had more time, I would talk about that. I I don't deny climate change, and I don't deny the need for our country and our world to do something. I just question whether or not, if you hired such a person, I don't know how you'd do a good job of evaluating whether they were doing a good job, a mediocre job, or a poor job. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate the comments. Uh, is there anyone else in the council chambers that would like to give public comment at this time? We have no one else signed up. I just wanted to, with the record to reflect, we received on for this public hearing, we received five written comments, one from Mary White, one from John Hartman, one from Sonia Majors, one from Don Nybar, and one from Donna Johnson. So those are the five email comments that we received uh, relative to the public hearing. Um, that, I will close the public hearings. Thank you, everyone. Give me just one second, and I would counsel, it's been uh, three hours and twenty minutes. I propose a ten-minute recess. It's back there again. Okay. And everyone, we're back from a brief recess. Thank you for your patience. It has been uh, three hours and twenty minutes, as I indicated before, and I I, for one, could not feel my toes, so it was time to get up and move about for a few minutes. Uh, with that, we are on to the consent calendar. I'd entertain a motion for adoption.
Motion to adopt consent calendar?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopted consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, that is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone. And we are on to item nine, ordinances and resolution for introduction and referral, resolution twenty-four nineteen eighty-six. Authorizing mayor to execute a contract with Accord Contractors LLC for the construction of the public works material bin covers, tennis court lighting, and oh, and I'm sorry. Just the material that covers Administrator Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a legacy project. Um, it's been the legacy of many people, and I think we're finally point where we will get this done. Um, if you've been out to the public workshop, you've seen our material bins, their ecology blocks. You got to drive down the center. You've got a uh, storm drain box in the middle, and they are open to the elements, and so everything that falls on our sand, our salt, our collected leaves, um, just runs right into that storm drain box. And so we've got dilapidated product there. The asphalt is failing. The storm drain box needs to be reworked. And so what this proposes to do is to remove and save the ecology block, stare out the concrete and the asphalt, um, tie in the box, put in new asphalt, concrete, add steel structure with roofing on top, tie in a um drainage system, so rain gutters basically from the roof system and convey that into associated stormwater water um system that's already on site. And that will address the concerns that we've heard from um a few project managers over the years as to that that runoff. Um, as was mentioned, um Accord Contractors was a successful low bidder, as I included in your agenda packet. Um, there were a couple of um issues, um items number two and eleven within their bids, where the unit cost was not carried across the bid price. After that was um reviewed, even when those prices went up, they were still the apparent low bidder that was examined further, and then there was a um letter of award put out. Um, this project is scheduled to begin by no later than February fifteenth of two thousand twenty-five. This gives us time to get through the winter season and our storage needs. Hopefully, we don't have a late winter, and um, because then we'll have some issues. Once this is complete, and then the timing of the um project that um Project Manager Phillips brought forward to you on the electric charging stations out of Public Works, once both these projects are in, and the entire parking lot will be overlaid um as a final project to wrap up. So um, this project is fully funded. It comes out of Stormwater Management Capital Fund. Um, I guess one thing I should also add is there is a contract in here as well uh for PACE engineers to do um construction services for this project. Um, I ran the calculations for you. Um, their their fee is about eleven point eight percent of the construction costs, depends on the upper end of that range of normal costs. And then we have a uh eight point three percent construction cost um for special inspection services. And then, like I mentioned, it's all funded out of the capital, um, Stormwater Capital Fund, and um the two thousand twenty-four CIP identified six hundred thousand dollars for this project, and the totals added together come in under that number. I can take any questions you have for me tonight, and I've asked it. We're not taking action on this tonight's introduction.
Colleagues, questions for Administrator Hill on resolution twenty-four nineteen eighty-six or question, uh, resolution twenty-four nineteen eighty-seven regarding PACE engineering. Cause we're a riddle.
Um, I'm trying to understand the sloping of the roofs, because we're doing, instead of one large superstructure, we got just just the material bins themselves being covered. Are they?
They slope back, and they're set high enough that you can get the dump truck in there.
Okay.
I've only slightly gone into the details of the construction drawings, but yes, um, that was one of the questions that was asked, is the type of equipment we use? The max height when it's tipped up. Yeah, they set across the aisle from one another, so they'll be sloped back, capture the rainwater, and then convey that to the storm drain system.
Okay. Do we, did we confirm that at least one of those um roofs could possibly have solar added to it, that it was?
They're both, they were both designed to handle future solar panels.
Thank you.
Yep. Colleagues, further questions for Administrator Hill?
Oh, did I miss, what happens to the materials during the construction? Where are they being?
They'll be stored on site, I would assume.
We're just kind of.
Yeah, they're they're gonna have to have.
Off to the, there's not that much.
There's not that much room there. Correct.
So this is not being done in a phase, one side, one side. It's
Because there's a lot of drainage work in the middle. It's got to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Colleagues, any other questions? This is the first touch. Hey, thank you, Administrator Hill. Oh, wait a minute, you are standing deck for like six or seven items, if I, if I'm not incorrect here.
For a while.
Um, let's see, twenty-five, twenty-six, King County Regional Homelessness Authority Memorandum of Understanding.
So as you remember, at your last meeting, both Abby and um now I forgot Abby's last name and um Nigel Herbig, we're here from King County Regional Homelessness Authority to present to you. Um, it's been almost two years ago when the council entered into the interlocal agreement um for homeless services at the north end of King County. And then subsequent to that, um, council at that time required a memorandum of understanding of how the city's funds would be allocated and spent. At that time, we were given three options, and council selected to um use that to fund a severe weather shelter. Um, before you now is a new memorandum of understanding, and one of the options in there is to continue funding the severe weather shelter. Um, the revenue stream that pays for this is a result of House Bill fourteen oh six in the two thousand nineteen legislative session allocating up to point zero one four six percent local sales tax credited against state sales tax for housing investments. Um, as you'll see in the table, uh, this is actually from the last time this was adopted. In two thousand twenty-two, we banked twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, and then um we've been banking similar amounts um going forward. Uh, at that time, I put in a three point five percent scaler for costs um for the housing authority. They um have only requested to increase their costs by three percent, and so um the anticipated costs for this upcoming biennium um are hundred. The actual cost is hundred and sixty-four dollars less than we had anticipated um originally. And so you see, as as you go forward, by around twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that banked capacity would be gone, and then that decision, decision at that time would be how you would um, if you continued with this program, make up the difference. Any questions on this?
Colleagues, questions for Administrator Hill regarding the MOU with King County Region, King County Regional Homelessness Authority. As we're riddle.
Was there any discussion if we were to go with an other option other than uh continuing to fund the severe weather shelter, if that would put that at risk?
Have not had that discussion, no.
Thank you.
I would say that would leave them a funding hole, yes, because you've got the five cities along the north end that um, and that they're different agreements with the other cities, and what we have, ours is ours is a little unique.
As are we.
Colleagues, any other questions for Administrator Hill on? Yeah, I know you. Yes.
Um, there was discussion about whether or not we wanted to change the allocation. Is that right?
Correct, within what was submitted to you from the Regional Homelessness Authority. Um, there are two other options in there, and then um I don't have that in front of me, so I can't quote them. Um, so there is the opportunity for you to put money elsewhere. Um, the one thing that they did state at the last meeting is that if you allocated that to one of the other two mentioned in the MOU, that three percent scaler would not be applicable.
Okay, so there are four options.
Okay, maybe there's.
And um, I I'm in favor of continuing the option number one, which is the severe weather response.
Colleagues, advice to refer to.
And uh, thanks for the, um, thanks for the, uh, all the extensive materials you've given us. And writing off of Councilmember LeBeau's question, if we were to go with any of the other three options that we're not pursuing right now, would that, would that require a significant amount of staff time in order to start that up as opposed to continuing option one, which we know how to do?
We, we just send them the money, so it doesn't really require any of our staff time.
Thanks. Personal questions. Okay, let's move on then to uh item ten, and next up is Phil again. Uh, resolution twenty-four nineteen seventy-six authorizing the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement for regional emergency management known as the North Shore Emergency Management Coalition. Thank you, Phil.
And as I, I won't overly repeat myself, but as has been stated before, um, there's been some changes to NEMCO. We have the North Shore Utility District that after this year will no longer be a member. A um reduction in the participation rate of the shoreline fire. Once they combined with North Shore Fire, they found less involvement, while they still need um Kevin services for training and things that they don't provide in-house. Um, they need less, and so what we end up with is the two um founding cities picking up the additional costs and um going from forty-seven thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars a year in two thousand twenty-four to eighty-three eight sixty-one. As you'll remember, this agreement, this interlocal agreement would only be for the year of two thousand twenty-five. As Ken Moore explores other options, one of the options they will explore is remaining with NEMCO, but they are going to look at other options and providing this um for their city. I have reached out to Shoreline. We will be having discussions with them on the possibility of combining efforts there, but we will obviously have to see what cost implications come with that. Cost implications come with that. If we can't find a solution and we're out there on our own, it's probably something we can't afford on our own. So, you know, my effort over the next year will be to find us a solution. If we don't find one, then NEMCO would effectively be dissolved at the end of calendar year twenty twenty five. And then reconciliation distribution of any remaining funds would take place. Any assets that have been brought into the arrangement, if they're owned by a member city, they will retain those. If there are other assets, we will work on disposition of those, whether that's sale and splitting of the funds equitably across your percentage of participation. Any questions on this?
Colleagues, questions regarding NEMCO? Councilman Goldman.
Yes, thanks. So in February, there is going to be a vote on the North Shore and Shoreline Fire Departments. Potentially merging to a regional fire agency. If that vote passes, will that have an impact on North Shore Fires being in NEMCO?
No, it won't. In fact, as we've met with Chief Cowan. That that combination of the two of them coming together is the reason why they've kind of reduced their participation. But they would still be a member of NEMCO going forward, even if that takes place.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, any other questions regarding the NEMCO topic? Councilman Lebo.
What would we do?
What would we do?
Yeah.
That's the million dollar question because we have so much wrapped up in this. The chief could speak forever on the volunteers, the cert volunteers, the ham radio operators, the. The drone program that they've got going, the training of our staff. This is not something you want to be a city that does not have emergency management in some form. Because the second you don't have it, something will happen, you'll be flat footed and we'll all be looking for jobs or new political careers. So we've got to figure it out and that's why I I've talked to the city manager from Kenmore. And have asked to be included in their meetings, included in that documentation so that we can weigh in. On that and hopefully speak to their consultant on the benefits and take the chief along with us. But you know, that's why I've talked to the city manager from Shore Shoreline. We've broached this with them before, at the time they weren't interested, it seems like maybe their minds have changed. But we would have to see what that cost allocation looks like, they're a much bigger city that. There's some. They're not as efficient and nimble as we are, as a smaller city. And so I just would want to be sure that we get what we're paying for and we're not paying for more than we're receiving. Just stay tuned.
How's my riddle?
I would suggest that we look maybe to our neighbors to the north on our border. See if that's something that if if I know crossing county lines can kind of be difficult. With emergency management, but that may be an option and that would give us position very well. Get help from either county if things were to go that way, but also other. Grant opportunities or what, like, I don't know what it does, what it takes to get, to keep this, it's gonna be really hard.
Yeah, I mean, we'd already get the EMPG grant that we split with Kenmore, I don't know. Kevin's always chasing grants, but it's usually for like one-time purchases, it's not for operations. And so it's, you know, to get you a drone, but now that's gonna cost you because you have to replace it and yet people have to operate it and there's training. And so, yeah, I haven't seen anything really just for operations.
Yeah, I mean, that this is, it's crazy because like you said, we can't be a city without emergency management.
Yeah, I mean, we'll.
The programs that NEMCO has shared with us is just amazing and what they can do. Sucks, all right.
Colleagues, any other questions regarding NEMCO? Administrator Hill, okay, we're gonna move on to Resolution twenty four nineteen seventy eight. Authorizing the mayor to sign the professional services agreement for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six state legislative advocacy services. With Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Relations.
I really appreciate Matt, Matt making it so I don't have to come back and forth, I can just stay up here all night, so. As you know, the city has worked, Shelley was here at your last meeting, we've worked with Gordon Thomas Honeywell for the past ten years. They're proposing a three percent increase inflation adjustment over the twenty three, twenty four contract. This is for the whole contract, so it doesn't go up again in twenty six. So the thirty eight, nine forty is the amount for each of the two years. As you'll remember from Shelley's presentation, we've done a lot of work with them. Fish culverts on Lion Creek, Five Acre Woods acquisition, conceptual design of the five twenty two crossing. Construction funding for the roundabout lakefront property acquisition. They've, they brought us, you know, they've helped us receive five point five four million dollars from the state. So that speaks to the benefit of being represented. They also, especially in the last couple of legislative sessions, all of the one size fits all land use bills. We've worked hand in hand with Shelley and her team. Brianna and AWC, SCA to make sure that at least our voice is heard. And I can tell you, we saw a lot of changes that were effectuated because of the information that we provided through our lobbyists. So definitely worth, I believe, everything price, the cost.
Colleagues, questions about the Gordon Thomas Honeywell? Contract. Councilman Riddle.
I I know this is just up for discussion, but we've done this so much, can we just?
You bet.
Would anybody here be interested in us just voting this tonight and being done with it? All right, I moved to suspend the three-touch rule for. I think you have to make the motion first. I think it doesn't, doesn't, does the order matter? I don't know. Whatever, I'll move the, I'll do it together, I'll move Resolution twenty four nineteen seventy eight. Authorizing the mayor to sign the professional services agreement for twenty five, twenty six state legislative advocacy services. With Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Relations, along with suspending the three-touch rule. As this is a standard contract that we have made with them repeatedly over the years.
That was second and second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution twenty four nineteen seventy eight and suspend the three-touch rule, is there any discussion? For Tony.
Thank you.
Calling him first, go ahead.
So, you know, for our friends out there who are concerned about city spending money on these kinds of professional services contracts. I think of the return of investment on something like twenty to one speaks volumes as to why we need to do things like this. And so I'm very much in favor of approving this contract.
Thank you, Vice Chair Fertani. Councilwoman Goldman.
I'll speak to the three-touch rule. I would support a modification of the three-touch rule where if the second touch is completely not controversial. There's been no public comment about it, no real council substantive discussions, then we can just go ahead and vote on the second touch. So that's essentially what this is.
Okay, any further discussion, all those in favor of?
Point of order, are we take, is this one motion, one vote, or is it two motions?
It's two, so we will start with suspension of the three-touch rule. All those in favor of suspending the three-touch rule regarding Resolution twenty four nineteen seventy eight, please say aye.
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 Are there any ayes? The ayes have it. Thank you, council, and then all those in favor of of adoption of Resolution twenty four nineteen seventy eight. Authorizing the mayor to sign the professional services agreement for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. The legislative advocacy services with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Relations, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any ayes? The ayes have it, it passes unanimously, thank you very much, council. Moving right along, Resolution twenty four nineteen seventy nine authorized the mayor to sign the retaining wall maintenance and replacement agreement. Between the Washington State Department of Transportation and the City of Lake Forest Park. Administrator Hill, thank you.
Thank you. So as you'll remember from our last time back in July of twenty twenty three, the council adopted chapter twelve point five zero retaining walls. In Lake Forest Park Municipal Code and then supplemental document retaining wall design standards dated July twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. With an effective date of August sixth, twenty twenty three, for the last year and a half. We have been working with WashDOT and Sound Transit staff to. The wall has been designed to meet the requirements of the wall design standards. The last year and a half, we have been working with WashDOT to get approval to build something that is outside of their standard spec. For a wall, basically what it came down to is that the maintenance and minor. Maybe it was small repairs, was it small repairs? Maintenance and small repairs of the wall would be on the city as we discussed last time. That's the drainage ditch at the top, the weep holes, making sure they don't get clogged. Graffiti, any minor imperfections, you know, car bouncing off there, there will be a. A wall in front of the wall, Jersey barricade style. In front of that to protect it, and then there is on top of that. And you remember through the negotiations with WashDOT is that we didn't have the wall with their chain link fencing and then ten feet or more. Of no man's land and then the fence for the residents. We got that privacy fence put on top and that will be a trek style fence, good long life. The city is also responsible for maintenance. It was a hurdle, it was a lot of work. City Attorney Pratt was very instrumental in that, but we've got it to a form now that we are comfortable, WashDOT is comfortable. And the question as far as, back to Councilmember Good's question from last time on irrigation. The design standards say that it is a preferred by the city, is how it was adopted by council, that it be irrigated. If it is irrigated, the spacing becomes larger because you expect the plants to be more vigorous and cover more of the wall sooner. If not, the spacing decreases so that we get the same coverage in about the same timeframe. And we had our engineering consultants speak on behalf of that at the time. As far as fiscal, we looked at this pretty expense extensively. There's really no budgetary implications to it and as far as the work this current staff could do this work. One of the details that's not spelled out in this agreement is exactly what this work is and how often it has to be done. It points to a lot of manuals that WashDOT has. And so the position that we finally decided to take was it's, we've got enough detail that we will go and make. Write up standard operating procedures that we will then run by WashDOT. Because one thing we want to make sure is we're inspecting it often enough and reporting the proper. Information to WashDOT so that should something fail, the finger doesn't get pointed back at the city. It's where the reason that the structure failed. Questions?
Some relief on.
Um, I think this might be separate, but will the WashDOT maintain it for a three-year plant establishment period?
Sound Transit will.
Sound Transit.
Is on the hook for the.
Okay, so there is a a plant establishment period for which even if they don't irrigate, they still have to establish the plants.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, any other questions of Administrator Hill regarding the last time? That's where we're riddle.
It looks like the initial fence on the top is being built by Sound Transit and we're responsible for maintenance? Is that what I'm reading?
Maintenance, repairs, replacement. Yeah, so if the kid kicks the soccer ball through it, that's why we didn't want vinyl, we want something that is substantial.
Durable and then and that will, this agreement then allows those homeowners to be able to put their party line fences all the way. To the very edge and we don't have to create that.
Correct.
A no man's zone, but it does mean that we would have to work with each homeowner to be able to do work in there.
Yep. And they. We basically would need to notify them that, you know, if it's in an annual inspection, when we would be there performing that work and and gain access. And we might have a dog or, you know, whatever, but that's why WashDOT did not want this. They like their corridor that they can just, as they put it, because they usually do highways, they just like to drive it and look at things. We were willing to take on the extra effort of going into the yards to inspect that.
I appreciate that extra work.
Alex, any additional questions for Administrator Hill? Okay. I'm sorry, vice chair.
I believe that the city administrator answered all the questions. I'd like to move Resolution twenty four nineteen seventy nine. Authorizing the mayor to sign the retaining wall maintenance and replacement agreement between the Washington State Department of Transportation and the City of Lake Forest Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, I.
I would also like to move to suspend the three-touch rule for this piece of legislation.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, let's take the second motion first. Any discussion about suspension of the three-touch rule regarding Resolution twenty four nineteen seventy nine?
Same as before, there hasn't really been anything all that substantive and this has been negotiated months and months of work. And so it seems like it's, it's a pretty standard thing at this point for us to approve what has been negotiated.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor of suspending the three-touch rule on Resolution twenty four nineteen seventy nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, it passes unanimously, thank you, colleagues, back to the main motion. Adoption of Resolution twenty four, I can't say this fast enough, fact that you were great faster than I was. You clearly have had more coffee than I did today. Authorizing the mayor to sign the retaining wall maintenance and replacement agreement between the Washington State Department of Transportation and the City of Lake Forest Park.
I just wanted to thank the city staff, especially you Administrator Hill, for negotiating this. This cannot have been a fun or quick process, so really, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of adoption of Resolution twenty four nineteen seventy nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any ayes? The ayes have it, that passes unanimously, thank you, council, we do have a lot on our plates. This to the reiner of the year, Director Vaughn is going to. Bring back to us item D twenty four, twenty five, twenty twenty six, biennial budget and related items. Questions for Director Vaughn?
Thank you.
Did you have a presentation first or no?
No, I do not have a, sorry, that was quick, I do not have a presentation.
I didn't think so, but I was.
Do we wanna, do I wanna briefly go over each one and then let's talk about each one or how? Because I have D through L.
Counsel, if I may make a suggestion, can we start in reverse order? Start, start from the bottom and work upwards, the more complicated one is going to be. Item E. Or would you like to start from the top?
I agree with you.
I'd just like to knock off the.
Yeah.
Easier ones, just for discussion purposes. Okay, so let's start with ordinance twenty four thirteen oh five, amending chapter three point one nine of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Codes. Sewer, stormwater and surface water service tax. Colleagues, questions? Vice Chair Fertani.
Is there a time limit about when these should be enacted so that we can start collecting them? In other words, in order for this to basically, assuming that we're going to approve the budget in a timely fashion. When do these particular increases need to be approved?
So specifically for the solid waste one, can, I might have to lean on City Administrator Hill.
So I actually tried to get an answer on this today, they need forty five days to notice it. My question to Wendy Wyker from Republic today that I haven't heard back on yet, she was hoping to hear by next week. If that's possible, so my question to her is, is this something they can only implement on January first? Can it be implemented at a later date? So I hope to have an answer to, well, I will have an answer for you before the fourteenth, if that's the point in time when you adopt these.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
And colleagues, this is the place, I just for. Clarity, this is the place to be starting to talk about which levers you want to pull. In anticipation of consideration of final adoption of the budget on. A week from today, actually, that's where we're good.
I'm in support. Of this. Ordinance thirty twenty four thirteen oh five.
Because we're Lebo.
Uh, just a general comment is, as I asked before, I I do want to see what the total impact is for our. Ratepayers. For all the sewer utilities, the increases, surface water. Understand how much are we asking for our households to pay?
Absolutely acknowledged and I'll make sure that it's in the next presentation that we, we have a slide that covers each, each piece. And then to to go back actually to the question about the utility taxes for sewer. We implement ourselves, so we can just adopt that and implement it. We would do it January one of twenty twenty five and what? And then on for surface water, we would have to know that actually in November, similar to property tax. Because that's the implementation of which that fee is then charged. So, so there's a couple of different times that I wanted to make sure we. Timelined with that question, sorry for circling back.
Deputy Mayor Bodie.
Yes, thank you, I'm in support of this ordinance like council. Yes, uh, thank you. I'm in support of uh, or this ordinance like Councilmember Good.
Thank you, Councilwoman Goldie.
Um, is this the part where we would talk about the split between how much of this goes to the climate manager versus the general fund?
That's okay, right? Yeah, so which agenda item with that? That's K. Aren't we on K now? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilman Riddle.
Yeah, so this, so. These are service taxes that go to support the service we're providing for the community, right? It has to be spent on the service operations or whatever, correct? Or is this the other?
No, uh, so these are the utility taxes end up. Becoming revenue into the general fund.
Yeah, so this is the service tax at the bottom.
Yep, so the utility tax is be, end up becoming, they are a charge to the tax being. The your um, sewer rate tax, your surface water. And then um, if the council so wishes to adopt a solid waste utility tax. Then it directly, those funds will um, become revenue into the general fund.
Okay.
They are receipted into, this is where it gets a little confusing. Um, they are receipted into the fund, so the sewer and surface water do come in. Within the that fund, so four oh one, four oh three, and then there are also an expense that then. Becomes revenue into the general fund.
I think we were calling it a utility tax earlier and this says service tax, that's why I wasn't making the connection. So this is a general fund.
Solid waste will receipt directly into the general fund because the city does not hold that as. Um, an enterprise fund.
So in addition to what uh, my colleague, Councilmember Lebo said, when we look at what that dollar amount that that homeowner is paying. Can we then also see? What's going into the general fund out of that? Versus the what is supporting the utility directly? Thank you.
Yes, I I just actually had a procedural question for Administrator Phil. When it comes to. These items here, L or D, D through L. Uh, the non controversial items, some of them are time sensitive, including the property tax. F, G, H, I, J. Is my reading of the council, those are non controversial. The budget itself. Uh, and the um. And the uh, ordinance K, uh, ordinance twenty four, item K twenty four thirteen oh four. Ordinance twenty four thirteen oh five, those are the three things that are up for discussion. The other things are not. Changing. Unless. I'm missing something here. The reason why I bring that to your attention just from a procedural standpoint. Is that there is the opportunity for you tonight, if you choose to go through the path of adoption of those. It allows you additional discussion time. Going forward. Just food for thought, unless I'm mistaken.
No, I think you have everything that you need as far as the ordinance levying, the um, the one percent. See sewer utility rates, surface water rates, the the and the user fees, the things that are a question, I think are going to require. Additional information from staff is um, where you're going to want to set those utility tax rates being. Surface water, sewer. And um, solid waste, um, so we'll need to bring information back on those. But. Did I answer your question? I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. I just, the sewer rates are not. The sewer rates.
No, I was, when I was saying sewer, I meant the utility tax.
The tax, right, which would be falling under.
Yeah.
Item L.
Correct.
Okay, and then, and also K, so. I just want to make sure everybody's tracking and make sure I'm not. I I I don't want to get out of my skis here, but I just, just for food for thought. Vice Chair for Tony, you've been waiting patiently.
That's okay. Um, so to absolutely put a bow around Councilmember Riddle's point. Um, in the ordinance title itself, it talks about sewer, stormwater and surface water service tax. I've been mistakenly calling that a utility tax, so the actual term is service tax.
No, I think it's referred to as a utility tax.
Actually, our ordinance, um, three point one nine calls it sewer, stormwater and surface water service tax. Looking at it right now. It would be ordinance twenty four thirteen oh five. After three nineteen. Yes, it does say service tax. Okay. So we're using them interchangeably. Utility tax, service tax.
As long as everybody's clear on that, that's, that's good, okay?
Oh, yeah, because we're golden.
So I, I do have a question about item L now. Um, so the. Ordinance talks about sewer, stormwater and surface water altogether. Are we required to raise or lower them all in lockstep or would we have the discretion to raise one but not the other?
Um, you, the the council would have the discretion to raise one and not the other. Individually, so you could, you could do something different. Um, as actually you saw from some of the neighboring cities, so water versus surface water. Um, versus the solid waste and I'm I'm using those all together because we're. I'm just, we're, we've been talking about all three of them, but you could do something differently. The council could elect to do something differently with each one.
That's correct, Councilwoman Riddle.
Which is the one that we can use the senior and low income? Reduction on.
Sewer.
Sewer.
And that is this tax that we could. They'd get the reduction on and and the rate that we get on both.
So it it, they have to qualify, so there's a, there's a um. Senior and low income, um. Senior disability, low income application, they have to apply and and be approved. And then um, if they qualify, then yes, the city does provide a reduced um. Amount for the services provided.
Do you, do you, can we figure out what that amount is? I can't remember if it's a percentage or what, I just don't know.
But yeah, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I'm, I'm happy to have. Circle back with you on that.
I'm wondering if there's a balance and of. Having sewer a little higher because that can offset for those folks. And then it would um. Just as a thought. So that they wouldn't be. But it kind of depends on how they calculate the um, savings. Or the uh. Reduction.
Let me understand it, why, why only sewer? Why not surface water or? Uh, stormwater? Uh, for the opportunities for low income or senior just uh. Reductions.
Um, I believe that is because it's through, uh, I might have to lean on Attorney Pratt. Um, I I believe that's through because it's we. Operate it and and have that paid through property tax. So I'm, I'm not sure if that's why.
I think that is it, but I'll look right now.
Okay.
My recollection is that's correct because county itself offers the relief from property tax, total property tax.
And I I'm just not, I would, yeah, we're gonna have to, we might have to circle back with you on that.
So one of my, um, one of the things about these taxes is they're very regressive. Because they're by household, not by ability to pay, except if you're at lower. Or um, senior. And so those in the middle um, pay the same amount as those that can much more afford to pay. If you got a five hundred thousand dollar home and you're paying uh, one tax based upon the property, it's the same as if you've got a five million dollar home. And so to the extent that we can offset those that otherwise. I mean, the, these are basically regressive. And so um. It is a concern. If there are, is not relief on the low income or a senior.
Vice Chair for Tony.
So um, yeah, in fact, I I agree with the comments that have been made and the King County property tax relief seems to be limited. Just to older homeowners, homeowners with disabilities, veterans. And property owners who suffered damage from natural disasters, so I don't see a general low income exemption.
It's in a state statute. It's in RCW fifty seven oh eight zero one four. You have the authority to adjust or delay rates for charges for low income persons.
Councilwoman Golden.
Um, another question, so the, the uh, chapter in our municipal code refers to sewer, stormwater and surface water. But your presentation only talks about sewer and surface water, and so. Is there a separate stormwater surface charge?
Stormwater is surface water, we just um. I guess felt we needed to add another word into the title of this. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it is the same thing. And maybe now is the time to look at that and remove one of them, surface water or storm, stormwater. I would be happy to remove one first.
It's not necessary, it usually just say storm, right?
Okay, yeah, I I like the simplicity because if we only talk about surface and sewer, then that seems, we should match that in the municipal code.
So uh, continue discussion on ordinance twenty four thirteen oh five. Talking about uh, sewer and surface water. Any other? Direction to staff or consideration for coming back?
So um, Attorney Pratt, did I understand you say that we do have the discretion to implement um. Low income or a senior um.
That RCW says you can do low income persons or classes of low income persons. Including but not limited to low income persons with disabilities and low income seniors, so. The choice previously was to do low income seniors. You have other, you have those other choices you could, could just do low income, low income with disabilities.
But we would have to pass some sort of motion to do so and I, I would.
Yeah.
These are going to be some significant increases when you total all this up. And I would, I would like us to look at doing something for low income. And that presumably that would include low income seniors because these are very regressive taxes. And. Coming into a levy proposal. It's. Going to be difficult.
And. King County does the processing of whether the person is eligible? Or do we have to determine if they're eligible?
No answer. I think, I think because they are uh, managing it for us. We are paying for a small admin fee for them to to manage this. I I believe they would have to. We would set the requirements and then they would have to say if it qualifies, I could be wrong. We might, they might put that back on us as, so I, we might have to get clarification. Cause I can, I, I can see that going both ways, actually. The more I talk this out, which I shouldn't be doing it up here.
Vice Chair for Tony.
Um, yeah, thanks. And I thought I understood this, but now I'm getting a little bit misled, uh, confused. Um, so. King County takes care of the surface water and the uh, and the uh, um.
Property levy.
Right, well, surface water, it, yeah, it, and uh, yeah, just, just takes care of that part. We, what we're just talking about now is about the sewer tax, correct? The sewer utility tax, the ability for us to input, uh, to have a waiver for low income?
Not to my understanding, so the the sewer, uh, we, we do have, we already have it in place. We already have a senior disability, low um, income. Option for people to submit and for us to grant a reduced rate, that is already in place. What we were discussing is that just for the surface water rate. For that to also follow the same that we are doing, we already have implemented for sewer. So we have it implemented for sewer, what we're, we were discussing is surface water. Um, it is different in the sense that sewer, we manage and handle internally here at the City of Lake Forest Park. Where surface water is being managed and handled through, that's why we have to submit the, the ordinances in. Uh, November, so that we give King County an appropriate amount of time to implement our desired changes.
All right, so can I continue?
Please.
Okay, so to be absolutely clear then.
Yeah.
One could have a, let's say, a low income waiver from the county on the county portion of the property tax. But our. Surface water utility tax would still be charged in full unless the council acts to grant that particular waiver.
I would say that is my understanding.
Okay.
Okay, I just confirming it.
That was my math on TV.
Yes.
Moment, thank you.
So um, I I would encourage the council to consider that we have low income, senior disabilities. Um, reductions available, given the regressive nature of these taxes. And I would also be in favor of dropping surface water just for stormwater and calling them utility, not service. Taxes. Clarity. I'm just a dumb homeowner.
I think that simplifies it.
Not to say that homeowners are dumb, just that I am.
Well, you saw me doing this, so yeah. Come on.
I, I think the more we can simplify it with the terms where I'm actually using probably keeps it.
And grow it. Would that be a separate ordinance? Or would it be built into this one?
I don't have to answer that. My recollection is last time senior uh, council did that by a resolution.
A resolution, okay, there we go, okay. If that could come with us next time, that'd be awesome.
Cause, cause we're golden.
Yep, so my first question, the low income senior discount. Would that apply to the entire surface water or sewer bill or just the ten percent utility tax?
No, it would apply to the entire bill. If the, if the council made that decision, it wouldn't be. It's, it's the whole bill.
Okay, um, well, my thoughts, kind of echoing Councilmember Lebo, is that. Um, whether, you know, the, whether regardless of someone's age, if they're low income, this is a burden to them. And so I'd like to see a sixth band, the low income, make it look everyone low income as opposed to just low income seniors. And also I'd like to see it for both surface and sewer. Since those can both be burdensome, especially if it's a regressive utility tax or fee.
I think Administrator Hill has a procedural comment.
No, not procedural. We were just discussing that it would be low, if you just. Put the caveat of low income and senior. Whether it's low income, low income, senior, senior, it would cover all, all of those aspects.
That's, because we're good. Did you?
No.
Oh, I thought you raised your hand.
I, I would focus on low income. Not every senior is a low income senior.
True.
Yeah, I think I was gonna say it's sort of a similar. Low income, I don't know if King County has different thresholds for low income senior versus a low income, non senior, but. I imagine they don't, um, and I'd be interested to see what, what their criteria is for disability. Uh, if that's just part of low income or if it's a completely separate like criteria. I'm asking a lot.
I think that's separate because I review the application.
Okay.
So disability, uh, disability um, is. It's um. It's one of the, it, it's basically senior or you, they, basically you have to. Prove that you are disabled in order to have the application approved. So there's, there's some approval process of documentations um, that have to be provided. In order for the city to um, effectively make that decision.
Yeah, yeah, there's a whole process.
There's, there's requirement, doc, yeah, very, there's required documentation that has to be provided. Um, in order to have, to, to be granted this relief.
I just want to try to put a pin in this. I think we want. To adopt a resolution that provides a low income. Um, waiver from uh, or discount from. Uh, from these, the surface water and sewer fees, so. I, I don't see the point of saying low income, seeing. I, I don't see the point of saying low-income, senior, or disabled. I think the, it simplifies it to make it a low-income criterion um, that applies across the board. So I think some of my colleagues have been saying that, but I just wanted to try to, uh, confirm that, uh, and summarize it.
Thank you, Deputy Reebody. Okay. Um, colleagues, are we? I just wanted to check a little bit on timing in terms of not just this evening, but going forward, I think that there are several items that you're requesting. Um, and one of the options would be, um, rather than, well, one of the options would be to find out what, what additional information you'd need to make informed decisions to direct staff for the creation of the final product, so to speak. Um, we have the fourteenth. There is an additional meeting that is available potentially on the twenty-first of this month. My concern is right now that we're, we don't have, you all don't have everything you need this evening to be prepared to make an informed decision next week, but it may be the late hour. So I just wanna, I wanna take everybody's temperature. And if that is the case, see if we can methodically march through these things to find out what additional information you need to have a very robust discussion next Thursday that we can pin down a budget that can be distributed to everybody for final, consideration of final adoption and the community, of course, for consideration of final adoption at a future date. I would assume it'd be the twenty-first. I don't, I have real concerns. There are some things in here we have to have done by the end of this, end of this month. So, um, I just, I don't want you to have to rush. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to navigate these waters if I can for, uh, the good of the group. Thoughts?
I, I think, I think what you propose is, is, is an excellent idea.
Colleagues? Okay. Um, I know I have staff looking at their shoes right now because that means an additional, um, delay. Um, so let's do this. On item eleven, on ordinance twenty-four thirteen oh five, action items to bring back for the fourteenth, you're looking for consideration of a, um, the ability to have a low-income, um, deferral or discount. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any additional items on, um, ordinance twenty-four thirteen oh five? And having said that, uh, does that mean no commitments here, but general broad strokes? Are you feeling okay about where the, the direction we're going here with this? Okay. Mr. Hill and then Deputy Reebody.
I was just gonna say, we'll get you all that information, um, if council desires to take action on the twenty-first. Once you have all the information of what it's going to cost the homeowner, how we can give the deductions at the meeting on the fourteenth, we would need to know if you're wanting to act on the twenty-first, the percentage, and that information will obviously help drive that decision. But just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. It's, it sort of gets to that point where you have to have a sort of a cutoff. It's set in stone. And then if it has to be amendments made, make me made on, on, on the date. Deputy Reebody, I'm pointing at you, but you probably can't see me.
That's true. So, so I just want to remind everyone that, um, to get to the, the budget uh, numbers that we're looking at, we do need to look at the top end of the uh, utility taxes that we're talking about here. And so my hope is for, for all of us and also for streamlining the, the conversation and decisions going forward, so we can do this in time, is that with the addition of the low-income resolution, um, we are comfortable going with the, what are basically the ten percent numbers, um, and, and moving ahead so that we can uh, make sure that we are, are helping, using this as other jurisdictions have to help and fill the gaps in the general fund. Um, I know some of the other charges that Councilmember Lebo is talking about are kind of almost like user fees or, or, you know, base fees and, and those go to the operations of the programs, but uh, I, I do, I do think it's important, um, that we, uh, consider adopting the full amounts that we're talking about here, the high amounts that we're talking about to get to a good budget result. I strongly support the low-income waiver. I, I hope that others of my colleagues are, are feeling that duality as well. Um, of, of filling our gaps, but providing, uh, for compassionate reduction.
Thank you, Deputy Reebody. I'm here, I'm seeing nods, um, three or four nods. Mr. Lebo.
Uh, I'm in general agreement, although I do want to see what is the total impact that we have for our households, because if it's too large, I mean, the alternative is that we use more of our unallocated. And, um, you know, part of this may be softening the blow, uh, because you just don't want to push too hard on our, our households and our citizens, particularly if we're going to ask for a levy lift. Um, because how they feel about how we're spending the money is an important aspect to how they vote.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lebo. Um, okay, so let's move to, um, ordinance, item K going upwards, twenty-four thirteen oh four, establishing new regulations regarding solid waste utility tax. I think we've had most of that discussion. Any other additional information that you would like? I know, Mr. Lebo, you are looking for some aggregate, um, impacts here. Vice Chair Ferretti.
So again, the question about the, um, extension, extending the waiver for the low-income on this one, because it's Republic Services, does anyone know if, uh, Republic Services offers a waiver of some kind, discount?
I don't know that, but I can find out.
Okay, thanks. And if, even if they do, um, can we extend it to the tax?
I, I think the tax ends up being, um, if it's exactly implemented in the same sense, whatever the invoice is provided, then it's the tax on top of that invoice amount. And so I think if they, if they provided relief, then it would just be, you know, ten percent of a smaller dollar amount. So it would be implemented in that manner.
If, if they do not, then no, we, we wouldn't be able to pass something because they charge it on our behalf and remit that to us. So if, if Republic doesn't have a program, then there wouldn't be relief.
I see.
Okay. Um, colleagues, I'm sorry, it's really bad.
Um, I, I understand the need for the solid waste utility tax. Um, and I believe that climate change is an existential threat to, um, our very survival. Um, but I cannot support this tax to spend, uh, the portion on, uh, climate project coordinator. I just don't think we get the value for what we're asking our citizens to pay for.
Colleagues? Vice Chair Ferretti.
If I may offer a counterpoint, um, the fact that the, um, initiative twenty-one seventeen, which we opposed, uh, did in fact go down, uh, means that the Climate Commitment Act is intact and the funding available from that, uh, that act uh, will continue to be available to the municipalities. And having a point person to apply for grants on behalf of the city, I think is super critical. That's one of the reasons I'd like to really see, uh, the, this utility tax, at least part of it, being used for, uh, funding the climate position.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Colleagues, any other comments?
Me? Hello? Hello?
Oh, I can't see you. Lost you.
I know.
There you go. Oh, no, no, the screen changed there.
Oh, really?
You can see her raise hand.
So, um, yes, so I wanted to say that in terms of, uh, discounts, um, there are different levels of service that can be, um, that, and, and smaller, uh, bin size that can be done. So, I, I do think that, especially in smaller, uh, senior in, uh, households, for example, uh, people may be using smaller bin size rather than the, the estimate that we use, the standard bin size that we used for uh, our calculations. So there, it isn't like a low-income credit uh, or waiver, but it is, um, a way that fees can be reduced by, uh, reducing the, the, the bin size. So just wanted to mention that. And then second, I, I do remain concerned. Um, uh, I completely agree, on the one hand, with Councilmember Furtani, and then I completely agree with Councilmember Lebo too. So I'm in the, I'm in, I'm still back in the split the baby kind of mode of, um, I really like to see half of this money go into the general fund. And it's kind of a compromise because we might not get, uh, a full um, hundred seventy-eight thousand dollar climate project manager, uh, if we do that. But I think that it's, um, I think that fifty-fifty strikes the right balance. So, uh, I realize that, um, I think it moves us forward without, um, uh, violating the principle of trying to rebuild the general fund, uh, revenues.
Thank you, Deputy Reebody. Councilwoman Goldman.
Um, yes, thanks. Uh, I will agree with Councilmember Furtani on this issue that, uh, I think we've heard from the community that they do want a climate manager. And also on I twenty-one seventeen, um, on the latest ballots, seventy-five percent of King County voters have voted against it. So climate, they are strong, King County is strongly in support of the Climate Commitment Act. And so for those reasons, I do want us to have a climate manager. Uh, ideally, I would have said, let's go faster, but I also recognize that we do need to try to balance the general funds as much as possible. So while I personally might have gone for a higher split, I'm willing to compromise at fifty-fifty, as was on, uh, Finance Director Vaughn's presentation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Goldman. Councilwoman Riddle.
I think as we move through the process of the levy question, I think we may have to come back and revisit what some of this, whether that levy can offset some of these decisions we're making. We have to make these decisions to make the budget work because that is our job right now. But some of these, I don't know if we can roll them back if we get the levy. And so I, I just want our council to think about that because it's, it's that piling and piling and piling on our community. But if we can say like, okay, we're gonna pull these taxes back because you voted to be able to take care of us and take care of the city and cover everything we need. It all, it all depends on what we ask in the levy, if it gets approved, if we do want it all. So I just want to throw that out there. Um, so that's all I got. I'm not making any decisions or anything. There you go.
Thank you. Vice Chair Ferretti.
So I, I guess the question really becomes, um, are we ready to give staff direction as to how to write this? Because I think we've just gone about five different directions. Uh, so as Deputy Mayor Bodie said, let's try to put a pin in this. Um, I'm proposing then that, I think, um, I wrote this in a proviso, which didn't show up, but in any case, that there would be a fifty-fifty split, uh, with the intention of hiring a climate manager by December twenty-twenty-five on or by. And, uh, that the, that there would be a certain percentage then reserved to help with the general fund deficit. And that way, that would give us a little latitude to address, uh, Councilmember Riddle's point that if we can wean ourselves off of that from the utility tax and therefore reduce the utility tax, that, that could, that could work.
Uh, colleagues, uh, would you just give a head nod if you're in favor of, of Mr. Furtani's direction?
I no.
Okay. Okay. Is that give staff enough riffing off of his, um, um, proviso that he sent?
Looking at my screen, did we get enough head nods? To give us some direct, direction. Okay.
Yes, we did. Okay. Thank you. Uh, that's great. So now we're at the things that are kind of not fungible, so to speak. Um, and again, if we're gonna delay this process, there's some things that have to be done. And so for maybe for everybody's blood pressure, if you, the items that you would consider for action tonight, I, I know staff and we would all appreciate slowing the process down. Mr. Lebo.
I, I, I would be opposed to taking action on any of these tonight because we represented to our community that these are for discussion and not action. There's a great sensitivity around our budget. And I don't think it benefits the community to pass anything tonight when we can do it on the fourteenth or the twenty-first with a regular, uh, meeting. I, I just think that if we try and pass something tonight, it, there's no benefit for it. In fact, I think it's detrimental to our public, uh, perception of, in terms of, uh, being transparent. We said we were gonna talk about it. We did not say we were gonna pass anything tonight.
Okay. Well, I would do that. Thank you, John. I just add that my expectation is that if we're gonna keep, continue to lay on some of these things, that everybody's gonna make sure that they have really dotted their i's and crossed their t's. So, Mr. Furtani.
So I guess to that effect, then, for, uh, the items that you had mentioned F through J, um, I'd ask if anybody has any questions on them because I think they've been pretty well explained from my point of view. So.
Councilman Riddle.
Uh, I think the, the only thing is if somehow we come up with a different number for the sewer and the surface water, as we have our discussion about how it's impacting our community. Because those rates are part of the, the, um, user fees, I believe. So if, if for some reason we want to deviate, then we want to make sure that we have the ability for, um,
Mr. Hill, did you have a comment?
Administration update the user fee.
Yeah, so these, I mean, these rates that we've put forward in the sewer and the surface water, remember, just to keep the wheels on the bus. Um, the, the only difference is in the surface water is the, the additional five percent for the NPDS, which, um, I think we've had quite a bit of discussion that that was the preferred alternative as to other funding strategies. Um, so make that point.
Thank you.
Deputy Reebody.
Yes, um, I'd like to propose that we vote on the utility taxes and user fees. In other words, the items that you've identified, Mr. Mayor, that we, that we vote on those on the fourteenth. Uh, and we could postpone the vote on the full budget, uh, till, till the twenty-first. But I'm concerned that we have had a good amount of discussion of this. And I realize what my colleagues are saying about looking at the total, um, amount. But honestly, I don't think we have much choice other than to provide a safety net for people with lower incomes. Um, and, and we don't have much choice at this moment, as Councilmember Riddle says. So I, I'm not sure. I, I do think it would be helpful to vote on these, uh, on the fourteenth and to have that expectation.
Thank you, Deputy Reebody. Councilwoman Goldman, I'm sorry, you were.
Yeah, um, the, I, I'm generally fine with these. Uh, the information I would like, um, in my mind, the surface and sewer utility rates are very much linked with the surface and sewer utility taxes. So what I'd like to know is what's the compounded? If we raise surface water by fifteen percent and we increase the surface water tax from six to ten percent, what is the combined impact of those two on a homeowner's monthly bill? So I would hope to have that information, but otherwise I'm generally okay with the numbers that we're proposing.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lebo.
I, I, I think we're good to go to the twenty-first. And I, I don't see any value in, in trying to say we need to get to the fourteenth when we haven't seen the total impact to our households. Because we're like on the surface water or storm water, whatever you want to call it, it's fifteen percent each year plus the utility tax increase for each year. So I think it's useful for our citizens to see the total impact and that we're just not rushing to pass it when we receive that information just in a few days.
But, uh, the, I guess we've seen the numbers, though, for just the, uh, rates themselves because those are the numbers that Director Vaughn, uh, gave us tonight. So in that sense, the homeowner would know that portion, and that'd be the part that we'd be voting on on the fourteenth anyway.
Thank you, councilmembers. Colleagues, any other comments on point? Uh, I would just say from my standpoint, these, these items are the, while they're part of an overall package, they are not something that I had. Maybe I'm mistaken that the council had any indication that, given any indication. Maybe I'm mistaken that the council had any indication that, given any indication that they wanted to try to, uh, relitigate the sewer rates or anything else. But, that, we're talking about a, a different tax structure as opposed to the actual rates themselves. Because as Mr. Mr. Hill said, this is to keep the wheels from falling off the bus. So again, um, we, we can talk about it on the fourteenth and go from there. But, um, we are going to be butting up against with the, the property taxes and, um, the general taxes. Um, we're going to be butting up against the end of the month deadline. There may be one additional or those are the two.
Those two, um, yeah, surface water.
On surface water.
Surface water needs to go to county.
Thank you.
May, may I ask a clarifying question? So I, I would like to provide everything that's being asked. Um, and it's also been asked to reproduce and in, uh, basically a, a, a whole nother budget version as proposed. But I just want to make sure that I'm including the intention of, and I, I fully understand, uh, that, that it has the possibility to change. I just want to make sure that the document, the next document I produce is what, uh, council is intending to see. Um, but the part that I just want to make sure I'm clear on is the utility taxes. Are we leaning towards showing it as the proposed as ten percent across for surface water, sewer and, um, the solid waste tax? To put that into the proposal, highlight it that it's, it's new. Um, I'm not sure exactly how to, I'll come up with how to do that. Or maybe just make it yellow or somehow identify the change. Um, I just want to make sure that I'm clear with the numbers because it has a, an effect throughout the budget. So that I'm giving, I'm providing what, what you're asking for through the numbers.
Um, speaking for myself, yes, that's exactly what we're looking for. Um, because I think the, um, document that had the actual amount of revenue generated plus the cuts that we made was based off of that ten percent figure. So I think to, I should say, rewrite the entire budget based off a different number would be madness at this point. So, yeah.
Colleagues, other clarifying comments or questions for Director Vaughn? Not from, excuse me, losing my voice. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. So are we good to move on from item number 10? We still have other additional work to do.
Did we do?
Do you want to go through all of them?
Oh, I see.
We've already, I mean, if you, if there are additional questions for these, the rates, et cetera, that's okay. Mr. Lebo.
Um, absent going through each individual one, I did want to make a comment on the, the budget. A couple of comments, in fact. Um, I know there was money put aside for, um, engineering associated with, um, Safe Streets and the proposals were Lake Forest Park Elementary and, and Briar Crest. I would, um, I would like us to see that when we look at, uh, I'm, I'm just not convinced that those are our highest priorities. And I, I totally get elementary schools and, and the like. But, um, we are proposing to use the, uh, traffic camera monies for these improvements. And there are considerations for equity requirements in the RCW. And I'm always concerned that, that we just run to, everything has to be a sidewalk. And, um, I'm just concerned that if we're going to focus on those two areas that if we're going to spend eight hundred thousand dollars, that we're just running to an, a sidewalk solution. When there are so many areas in Lake Forest Park that do have a, a traffic safety and, um, active mobility need. And so I would like to see that we, we have some way of saying how we're really going to spend the money. I, I'm fine putting the money in the budget. But I think in terms of how we spend money, I think needs more of a, of a conversation than just say, we're going to dust off a six-year-old study and, and that's going to be the basis for how we're going to proceed with our priorities. The second is, um, I am opposed to, uh, uh, the climate project coordinator for our budget reasons, not because I don't believe it's important. And we do have cities around us. We have counties, uh, King County is working on climate, uh, initiatives. So are the cities around us. And, um, as was pointed out, the, the citizens of the state of Washington, um, strongly supported, um, the carbon tag initiative by rejecting what was being proposed. So I don't think, and when we say to our citizens, this is the highest priority of how we're going to spend the money.
Councilmember? Colleagues, other questions? Again, we're focusing at least for purposes of discussion right now. Uh, I, on section 10 and the items related to the budget for staff to bring back in preparation of this, of an amended, um, budget with yellow lining or red lining or underlining. I'm not sure what it'll look like for the changes.
And just before I forget, I, I haven't seen it, but if you could share what Jack Tonkin suggested as cost.
There's been a request to distribute that to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because I think we should all continue to look for, uh, ways to, um, streamline our budget on our expenditure side.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Yes, um, so I had written the proviso that Matt printed out for you. Um, I was never really happy about it, about targeting our community services. And to be totally honest, after hearing so many members of the public speak in favor of our community partners, I'm not even really in favor of my own proviso anymore. I'm happy to discuss it if people want, but I think it's a relatively small dollar amount. And it does provide, you know, even the more arts and cultural ones do still provide a substantial benefit to the community. So at this point, I'd like to keep our community, uh, services money intact.
Thank you, Councilmember. So you're suggesting we discard that?
Yes. This is an overwhelming desire to take it up.
Thank you for the work you did on that. Appreciate it. Colleagues, anything else on budget that you would like to see incorporated for informational purposes or for clarity for next week? It's going to come up very quickly. Vice Chair Furtani.
And just because I brought it up, um, it, it, this is more of a question to staff. Um, the proviso that I wrote yesterday, um, can, can that be distributed at some point?
Yeah, I can send that out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mr. Furtani. Okay. Are we comfortable?
So, uh, could I?
Yeah, sorry, Lori.
Could I just say, uh, something? So my understanding, just to clarify, is that, um, uh, there's a sense of the council on the, on the, um, solid waste tax. Um, and, and that's shared by, uh, most council members, but maybe not Councilmember Lebo. Um, and so that's okay. Uh, we, we don't always have to agree. But I just wanted to clarify, that was my sense. I realize I'm on the, I'm on Zoom and so I'm not in the room. But, uh, is, is that the understanding? So is what we're putting in the, uh, in the proposal, uh, the, the, the kind of, the split the baby kind of, kind of approach? Um, I think the answer is yes. Um, and then, then second, I would say, I, I, with, with complete respect, and I, I often agree with Councilmember Lebo on, uh, his sentiments and his, and his proposals. But, uh, with respect, I do think the, the schools, the say, the routes to schools, safe routes to schools are, are priorities for engineering. Because with that, there are funds that we can go to for just that purpose, walkways to schools that we can, uh, get, apply for grants for, which we have not been able to do without the engineering drawings. So I, I urge us to keep that priority and in the budget as well.
Hi.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie. Councilwoman Goldman.
We've heard a lot from our community about the Climate Action Manager. And part of me, uh, is in support of that. But when I keep thinking about what is the job description and what will they do? I don't really know what they would do. I mean, it seems like a lot of money for, that's a pretty high-paid position and I don't know what their functions would be. And so part of me is confused about the expense for that when I don't really know what it is. Yes, it sounds like a good idea. We should, we have one. But what are they, what are they going to do? I mean, it could be a clerk. It, it wouldn't, you know, a part-time person, a high school kid. What is the role? What are the functions they, they would actually go through and perform? That's the, my problem with that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Goldman. Vice Chair Furtani.
Yes, and Councilmember Goldman brings up an excellent point. You're right. You don't want to buy a pig in a poke. So the, um, I think the reason, you know, we used to be calling it the Climate Action Manager, but the name got changed to a Climate Project Coordinator. Because, um, according to municipal HR, that's an actually defined position. So I think, uh, it would be appropriate if we could find some, uh, job descriptions from other cities uh, that have literally that position and see if, uh, we can't get that distributed around.
Okay, fair. That's very reasonable. Thank you. Both? Right? Right. Still on budget, any other additional items that you would like to see here? So that we can? Okay. All right. Uh, if everyone's comfortable, let's move on to item 11, ordinances and resolution for action. Uh, item A, resolution twenty-four nineteen seventy-three approving Liz, Liz Loomis' Public Affairs Professional Services Agreement for Levy-Lidlift Consulting Services. Administrator Hill.
Thank you. This is the last time you have to see me up here tonight. Um, those who remember, the city did, uh, put out a request for qualifications um, for firms to assist the city in exploring possible Levy-Lidlift. Um, these were done January second through the sixteen, July second through the sixteenth. We received no responses. We put it back out for a three-week period. July twenty-second through the twelfth, we had three respondents. Um, Councilmember Goldman, Riddle, myself, um, Lindsay. I think that's everybody, um, reviewed the proposals, interviewed two firms. And following those, um, unanimous decision to recommend to the entire council, Liz Loomis Public Affairs to assist in this effort. Um, the contract that's before you has a start date of October. Wow, it's time to go home and go to bed. December first, twenty twenty-four. Um, as I had stated previously, and you heard tonight during Liz's, um, presentation, um, we've already engaged the, um, the firm to run the poll that went out in the mail on the first, and, uh, people should be getting that in their mailbox any day now. Um, we've got all the advertised up on the website. Um, Ms. Loomis and her team helped to draft a lot of that, um, letter and questions to make sure that there was a tie. They have a lot of expertise in this. Um, and so that, that brought a lot of effort to, a lot of benefit to that effort. They did not charge for that. That was pro bono, just to make sure they got the data they needed to help assist the city in moving a, uh, levy process forward. As was stated earlier tonight, there's been no decisions made. The idea behind this consultant is to help the council and the residents understand the process, figure out what it is we need. And, um, I know I've heard some concerns about, well, what type of levy are you going to run? Well, you know, we have a, a thought that it's not going to be a, a single year, you know, perpetuity. It's going to be a multi-year renewable levy, but there's a lot of details that go into that and some exploration that we need to do. Um, so back to as far as the budget implications. Uh, you'll remember that, um, when you pulled one of the plus, um, positions out of the PD, we put forty thousand dollars in professional services for executive. That covered the cost of the, um, consultant for the survey as well as, uh, we'll cover easily the first month of work for this contract. And then we have built in, um, the rest of the, um, contract amount into the professional services for executive in the upcoming budget. Um, as was mentioned earlier, there's some other things that have to be done. There'd be some video content produced, um, but it's, it's a small amount. And then obviously we have to do that one mailer, which runs us around five to six thousand dollars, um, to do that one mailer. The city's allowed to do, uh, under levy, should you choose to go forward. But there is sufficient budget to carry out this process. Um, this is recommended for approval tonight. Um, you could delay if you have questions, um, to one of the two upcoming meetings. But this does anticipate a December first start. And as I mentioned, they do, um, find that a twelve-month runway is your best. So, um, that's put us right at twelve months roughly.
Thank you, Minister Hill. Friends, what questions you have for Mr. Hill on this? On resolution twenty-four nineteen seventy-three? Got him stumped. Okay, um, Mr. Furtani.
I move to approve resolution twenty-four nineteen seventy-three, approving the Liz Loomis Public Affairs Professional Services Agreement for Levy-Lidlift Consulting Services. And also want to thank the, uh, city administrator for negotiating the contract.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-four nineteen seventy-three, approving Liz Loomis Public Affairs Professional Services Agreement for Levy-Lidlift Consulting Services. Any further discussion? Councilman Lebo.
I think we're getting a little in front of ourselves. I mean, we're pushing for, um, this hire so that we can get to November twenty twenty-five. Um, we do have a budget issue that we need to, to resolve. And I think that how we present this to our citizens is very important. And what we're presenting to our citizens is that even before we get a survey, with the knowledge that we have a budget issue, we are going to hire a consultant who's going to tell us how to put together a levy lift. And, um, we don't fall off a cliff in twenty twenty-five, literally. We do have a structural, um, budget issue. And I think it's important that in this community that has not passed a, a levy lift in, I don't know how many years, but I am familiar with the last two. Um, it doesn't take up very many people to, um, set a tone for an election. And if the tone that we're going to set is that we're going to educate our citizens on what we need to have them do, um, that doesn't set a very good tone. And that's the way this is coming across. And the, the individuals who have spoken tonight watch what we do and watch the budget. And they are, they are pretty humble when they say they don't really understand this stuff. I mean, these are very sophisticated people who really do understand it. Yeah, but our budgets are complex because of the restrictions that we have on how we can spend the money. And so I, I think we should become educated by our citizens of what they really want to see from us and how they want to spend their money, rather than us telling them how they should spend their money by increasing the taxes. You know, just as we've talked about this evening, to keep the wheels on the bus, we are going to implement some very regressive taxes. Um, a property levy lift does have the ability, and as Councilmember Riddle has pointed out, that we could roll back some of those regressive taxes and put a more progressive tax in place. But I think it requires a fair amount of education. And I have advocated many times for a citizens' financial stability, um, committee, committee, really to bring along our citizens. And I think if we don't really spend the time of bringing them along as opposed to telling them how they should proceed, we are not going to be successful. There is a very committed group in Lake Forest Park that watches the budget in City Hall very closely. And, um, you know, we all get a very strong reaction when we see some of the signs that we've seen that go up. And that's what people are going to respond to. So, um, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves.
Deputy Mayor Bodie.
Yes, um, I support this, um, approving this because I think the whole point is to actually have learned from the mistakes of the previous propositions and to actually hear from the community. And this is a way that we go about doing that. I don't think that this is at all, uh, telling the community what we need to have. I, I do think that the, um, utility taxes and the levy lid lift are complementary. I do understand that, you know, to the community, it may seem like two bites at the apple. But a levy lid lift wouldn't go into effect for quite a while now, even if we, it goes to the voters in in November and gets approved. So I I do think this is our effort to take the time and to listen to our community. So so I I see this contract as the opposite of what Councilmember Lebo is concerned about. I'm concerned about the same thing. I see the contract as part of the remedy against that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie. Thanks. Councilwoman Reagood.
Not, not tonight, but the other meeting that we had in regards to this. We've had, we had members sitting in the audience that said they wanted to be able to help us, that they were willing to help us with the budget and help us point out things that we could work on without having a consultant. And I would say that I've heard nothing but negative comments in regards to hiring the consultant and because of the amount and and so I agree with Councilmember Lebo on one part, because it is a bad optic, because it's a lot of money. And there might be time to take advantage of what our community members are offering in helping. And if they feel like they're part of the solution and we can't, still can't come up with it, with what we need, we probably still have time to engage a consultant to put something in place for, for the time that you need it.
Colleagues, Councilwoman Riddle.
When Prop 1 failed in 2021, there was significant misunderstanding of the basic process of which property taxes are developed. There was a misrepresentation of how much your property taxes were going to go up. There was a lot of issues out there with the information that was out there. What I like is where there's that public outreach engagement period where we can educate the community on how we determine what a property tax is and what the levy lid lift means and what six years means versus perpetuity, whatever was, is that we need to engage with in, in a way that's factual, engaging, that folks will actually listen and kind of understand it, because it can be broken down into smaller pieces and shared to the community. Our staff has not got a time to do something like that. Even if, after all of that, the community goes, I'm, I'm educated, and I still think we shouldn't do it. I think it's still money well spent, because now we have an educated community that knows how these things are working. And we have an ability to combat some of that misinformation. So being that this has kind of a no-fault walk away, I'm okay with that, even if we use them for education and the community says, yeah, I know all about this. I still think we shouldn't do it. I still think this is money well spent. Because I don't want to see a big portion of our community bamboozled by misinformation. I want them to be educated. I want them to be empowered. And I'm okay if empowering them says, don't do this. But that's my first goal here, is empower our community.
Councilwoman Goldman.
So we heard compliments tonight about how we trimmed our biannual deficit from 3 million to 900,000. One of the ways we did that was by deferring the vehicle replacement. And that is not a long-term solution, because those vehicles are still going to need to be replaced. And so we're not, this is not going to solve our general fund issue. In some ways, we're kicking, we're kicking the can down the road. I think it's reasonable to hear from the community through a survey as to what they want. What are they willing to spend money on? Are they, are they willing to spend money on police vehicle replacement? Or safer routes to schools or other public safety-related things? I think we need that information. We don't always get a huge turnout. We had a decent turnout tonight, but there's a lot of people. There's 13,000 people in the city, and most of them never come to council meetings. So I think it's really important that we get that information. Now, depending on the results, we can, you could choose whether we want to move forward fully or whether we want to engage more specific segments of the community or to take the off-ramp. We do have that off-ramp. So I think it's okay for us to start the process, to start the data analysis, to start the education, knowing that we are not obligated to do a levy next November. We can make the decision that is best for our community based on how we're engaging. But I do think we should start the process.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Chair Ferratoni.
Listen, to add on to Councilmember Goldman's points, the the fact is that none of us are professional communicators up here. And so having a firm like this, professional services agreement, literally, we're hiring them to make the message spread out. And the fact that, you know, when, for instance, the Climate Action Committee tried to do a survey, we got, you know, 400, 450 responses back. That was considered amazing. But this was rank amateurs doing it. And so the point that of hiring this firm is so that we actually get the survey out to thousands of our residents and get their opinions. And these people know methods by which they can do it. And that's one of the reasons why we hire that expertise, is so that we can get the information that Councilmember Goldman was talking about. So that for this reason, I'm very much in favor of hiring this firm.
I think we've gone around the horn.
One more time. I think what the, the problem that the residents have is the dollar amount. And if there, if there was, if it's the survey that you want to get by, then do a, do a survey amount where you can do an addendum or a change order to do the rest. But that way that the the initial amount would be smaller, and it wouldn't be such a shock, because, you know, you could get half your fleet for what the price of the contract is. So it, you know, if you, if the main goal is to get a survey put out, then have them put a number together for just that survey.
Point of clarification, the survey was already been contracted with another firm that that was separate from this. This is your public outreach and communications based on the survey data that we give back. They they go hand in hand.
Well, then I'm, then I, I defer to our public, they're not in favor of this. And I don't want to go forward if most of the people I hear from, not, not even, not even just in here, but just on the street, people come up to me and they talk about how much that contract is.
I, Deputy Mayor Bodie, and then Councilwoman.
Yes, I'll be brief. I want to echo Councilmember Riddle's point, because she and I were both on the council with the 2021 Prop 1. And property taxes are very confusing. People think we get much more money than we do, because they think most of their property taxes come to us. They, they don't realize that their levy rate has actually been going down over time. They think the levy rate's been flat. And if we actually went back to the levy rate from 20 years ago, maybe we'd be in awesome shape. Right? If we had locked in a levy rate instead of the, without having the state legislation that that limits the annual increase. So I, I, and we, we were not professional communicators. It's complicated stuff. And I think that we need assistance in educating our community. And I just want to say, I completely agree. If the community, if we want to kill it before we go out with the proposition, or if our community votes and votes against it, we'll know so much more, and they'll be so much better educated. So for that reason, I'm strongly in support of this contract.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie. Councilwoman Riddle.
Yeah, and I think in addition to engaging how we do property taxes, I think there's a lot that folks still need to learn about our budget, even the educated folks that were here today. You know, understanding what, you know, one of my predecessors called the color of money. You know, you can't just move money from one space to another. They, they have purpose, they're restricted. And, you know, there's this flush of money that's coming from the traffic cameras, speed cameras. But it's not money that we can use to do things like pay all our police officers, like we can do little chunks. But they see that money, and they're like, well, you don't need, you're getting $8 million. You don't need us to, but that doesn't go where the actual operations are. And I think that kind of education is going to be crucial for our community to truly understand why we say we're 3 million shy. And they look at the budget, say, well, you're only 300,000 shy. Because we're looking just at the general fund. And that's what makes this, this city run. And without the general fund, we, we can't do anything. No payroll, no lights on, nothing. So I want to utilize this tool that we've been given to educate the community on budgets, tax, property taxes. Even if that's all we get out of it, that is just tremendously a major return on whatever amount of money we spend to get to that point.
Did you have a, very, everybody, I'm just not around the horn, I make sure that I, and everybody's had at least once an opportunity. Okay, there's a motion and second on the table for adopting Resolution 241973, approving the Liz Loomis Public Affairs Professional Services Agreement for Levy-Lid Lift Consulting Services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although, all those who who oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the, let the record reflect, it's four ayes and two nays, passes. Thank you, council. Director Vaughn, welcome back. Ordinance 2419, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, 1297, amending the 2023-2024 budget. This is our, what we do towards the end of the year, true up.
So, thank you, Mayor. Matt is going to put up, are you going, no?
No.
Wow, I was. But it was in the, yeah, so there's, I guess it's just in the packet. Probably my bad. So do we want to walk through all of, or should I just highlight the budget amendment? I did make one change I want to highlight, and that is in the, the, excuse me, not the vehicle, the Information Technology Fund. And that is that we are receiving a grant, which is what we constantly are asked to do. So we received a grant, and it's for just over $27,000. And that is towards putting together some hardware and professional services in the Information Technology Fund. And this is the first time you've seen that addition. It's just a direct pass-through. So if the temperature is not to approve this budget amendment tonight because of that change, that's a, I'm, I'm, can go either way, because we have future meetings. So that is, so thank you, Matt, up on the screen. That's the, the one change out of this, this budget amendment.
Councilwoman Riddle.
To put a fine point on it, ending fund balance didn't change for that.
And it'll, it'll, yep, revenue, it, direct pass-through.
Colleagues, other questions on the budget amendment, Director Vaughn? If you were to move adoption.
I would let you move. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 241297, amending the 2023-2024 budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 2419, 1297, amending the 2023-2024 budget. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Passes unanimously. Thank you, council. And then the last housekeeping item, sort of, ordinance 241298. I got the number right this time, amending the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code by creating a new chapter, 3.87 Traffic Safety Fund.
So on this one, this is the creation of the Traffic Safety Fund that is a sub-fund of the general fund. And the question that has been asked about the interest on this fund, I did find the answer out as of today. And so basically, the city has the option to choose where that interest goes if we so choose. So if we so choose to have that interest fall into the general fund, we will need to make an amendment to what is in the actual ordinance to make sure that it is clear that the interest for the Traffic Safety Fund will go directly to the quote, "general fund." And although this is a sub-fund of the general fund, that way, that additional sentence adding that, it just keeps it very straightforward. And so that's circling back with that information. And that concludes my overview of the establishment of this fund.
Councilwoman Riddle.
Is that a sentence we feel comfortable doing now, or do we need this to come back?
So City Attorney Pratt already provided that language. If I can either read it or just add it in, or how does that work? Can I do it? Can I do that? Okay, so at the end of establish 3.87-010, under established there, it says, "Interest income from the Traffic Safety Fund shall be deposited into the general fund." It's just that simple.
Are we ready to move as amended, or? Any other questions for, okay?
I'm sorry, colleagues, other questions? There we go. Okay, Councilwoman Riddle.
I will move ordinance 241298 and ordinance of the City Council, the City Lake Forest Park, Washington, amending the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code by creating Chapter 3.87 Traffic Safety Fund, providing for separability and establishing an effective date as amended by the Finance Director's language.
Okay, second. So we moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 241297, amending the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code by creating a new chapter, 3.87 Traffic Safety Fund, as amended with the addition by Director Vaughn, as shown on the screen. All, any further discussion? Here, none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? And ayes have it, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, council, colleagues. Let's see, moving on here, what have we got? Well, I would recommend that unless there's something burning that you really need to discuss. Yes.
Do we have to mention the 21st as the meeting date? Or is that already scheduled?
It's already scheduled as a special meeting, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, it would technically be the budget and finances.
It'll just be repurposed to a special council meeting, as all of these have been. I think we have.
So I don't know.
So it is, yeah, that's what I thought. I was thinking that was a city council special meeting, so we're, we're good. There's nothing else for, for the good of the order? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, take care.
Goodbye.
Bye, Lauren. Take care.
See you next week.